Welcome to our regularly scheduled City Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023. Let's all stand and say the pledge of allegiance together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
We have a few housekeeping roles that we want to go over for this evening. We want you all to be able to, those of you who put your name on the list or addressing each of the items on the agenda, are welcome to come forward. I will be calling your name and you will come forward to address the item on the agenda. There will be a five-minute time limit and there will be only one opportunity for you to speak at each item. So I hope you all understand. If you have any questions, you're certainly welcome to ask.
I got a question. May I speak at the top of the list? I have a soccer coach. I think I have to get to the seven. It's very important in my business.
We'll see what we can do.
Thanks.
We will address the consent agenda, approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes from the July 18th, 2023 Regular City Commission Meeting. Make a motion when you approve our consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, yes, sir. I skipped the little call. The middle call.
Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
Commissioner Hines?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Mayor Pearson?
Here.
Commissioner Vetta?
Here.
Thank you.
Did everybody hear us back there? Good? Thanks.
All right. Moving on to old business ordinance number O-6-23, the third reading.
An ordinance to adopt Chapter 109 Rental Housing Regulations.
Good evening, Mayor. I just wanted to open it up with a little chronology about the timeline for the rental inspection program. So the original launch of this and discussion with the public was placed on October 13th, 2021. You held a town hall at the commission chambers and I think we went on for about two hours that night having lively discussion over the introduction of the proposed program. It then went on to the June 13th Planning Commission just recently, where the planning commission moved to bring it forward before you, where we had the June 20th Commission meeting, which was the first reading, the July 18th Commission meeting, which was the second reading, and tonight is August 2nd, which is the third reading. So along those opportunities, we've had quite a bit of public input, online comments, in-person comments, emails, and we revised and really tried to work at getting the program to meet a lot of the requirements that were requested. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thanks, Paul. So what I want to do is just real quickly, I've got a few slides that we can go through just to kind of revisit where we started with all this and try to answer a few of the questions that have been raised in the previous readings and earlier discussions. So again, and there's not a lot of slides here, so don't worry. But this really goes back to our plan where there was some analysis that was done that identified that the rental housing stock in particular in the community was something of a concern. And it really predates that. If you've been around, you may have heard this conversation for a decade or two decades or more. If you look at census data, there's some data that people out of there that seems to validate the findings of the conference of plan, which indicates that there are some concerns with some of the housing units and rental units in particular. Some of the discussion that occurred is about code enforcement activity and the existing code for being enforced, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So this is a tally sheet that we maintain that we put out every month, which highlights the cases that have been opened as it relates to property maintenance activity. We have one code official who has been with us since 2016. That's when property maintenance first became the responsibility of the development department. And then subsequently, about two years ago, we hired an individual to also assist in this area, but his primary focus was the tall grass issues that we inherited when the whole department went to manage accounting. So tall grass and this and this. But between the two of them, there was 1,815 cases that have been opened, 1,444 resolved. That's eight percent. So that's a pretty good compliance rate. Seventy-one of them, there was no merit and they were complaining, but we couldn't find an issue, the concern was that they were dismissed. Two hundred ninety-eight of those currently remain open. And of that two ninety-eight, there's one hundred eighty-eight of them where the notice has just been issued. So there's not been a chance for the evade to occur. Thirty of them have went beyond that. They haven't taken any action. And so it's now in the hands of the law director and/or been referred to the courts. And forty-eight of those two hundred ninety-eight are structures that are actually from down in the walkaway properties where there's no active ownership interest to have a conversation with. We then 25 have been through the court process and the judge has issued the orders and so we're still working towards the evade of issues. I share that with you just to highlight the code activity that has been happening in terms of enforcement. But as you all know, this happens from the right way, viewing the property from the street. This is exterior concerns, not the interior, and less than likely to the property by the tenant or the owner. These are slides that we had at the work session back in April. This shows you the notices issued, the percentage that are owner occupied, non-owner occupied, so rentals. About sixty percent of them fall on the non-owner side. Of that sixty percent, eighty-five percent of them end up in court, meaning it's difficult to gain compliance for whatever reason we're dealing with those properties. There's also a high number of those properties that end up in the tenant status because of conditions that are being dealt with. So seventy-two percent of those. These are the, these are just some of the images that we provided at the work session to illustrate what we're talking about in terms of the conditions that we're trying to abate to reduce code enforcement, property maintenance code activities. The bigger concern perhaps is that currently we do not look at the interior of the property unless invited and by the tenant or the owner. And unfortunately, in those instances where we happen, by renters that are moving out and are discouraged by the lack of maintenance on the property and they ask us to come take a look at it, these are some of the things that we find. This is certainly not suitable living conditions for any individual. Again, just in order of those problems. So this is, this is at the core of the issue. And this is why we're having the conversation that we're having. So just to revisit how we've gotten here today, on April 24th, we held a work session with City Commission and the planning commission was also over that. During that work session, we provided you with a presentation, which I just summarized, but there were a lot of other information and details in there. And at the end of the day, what we were putting forward was a renovation that would be a rental inspection program that requires all rental dwelling units to be registered and licensed. And in doing so, it would subject all those licenses to an exterior and interior inspection. And then the third leg of that was at the time when we're discussing acquiring landlord who'd be a guarantor with utilities and the tenants' name, trying to address the issue of unpaid utilities that we were dealing with. April 25th through May 24th, so following the City Commission work session, they held a public commentary. So we created a webpage dedicated just to this discussion. So there was a portal where folks were able to access, do online supplemental form, provide comments, feedback. Following the work session, I should have mentioned, the presentation was posted to that website. And that's a recurring theme. Each of these meetings prior to or immediately following, depending on what information is made available, that information has all been posted to that website as we've been through this process. On June 13th, the planning commission here held a public hearing. Additional public comments were received in addition to those that have already been received in public commentary. And the planning commission considered the items that was before them and recommended approval of the rental housing regulations that had been, as they were drafted at that time. In June, on June 20th, the City Commission held the first reading of the ordinance, which you said before you'd seen. There were additional public comments received. At the request of City Commission, we prepared a response to those comments. And at this position, the public comments was posted to the website. So we were being responsive to the concerns and questions that had been raised. In addition, in response to the earlier public comments and those presented at the June 13th Planning Commission meeting and subsequently at the June 20th City Commission meeting, there were some revisions that were suggested and ultimately made to the draft ordinance. And so those revisions, just to walk through them real quickly, and bear in mind, at each reading, at each point in this process, the ordinance and regulations as they were currently drafted at that point in time were published as part of the City Commission pack. But to summarize the revisions that have been made in response to the comments that have been received, there were some additional definitions that were added to add some clarity in terms of what each of those items meant. Under the License Application section, the requirement to provide the tenant's information was removed. Likewise, there was a cross-reference to the Ohioer Rights Code that spoke to tenant information that also was removed. Under the License Period section of the regulations, we removed the requirement to renew the license upon transfer of occupancy. The, under the Inspection and Certification of Conditions section, there was, the text was modified to clarify or better explain the requirements for the code official to notify the owner and occupant prior to inspection. And then under the License Issuance section, we removed the reference to unpaid utilities, thereby eliminating the previous item where we discussed the landlord being the guarantor and just took that section out, took that piece out altogether. We also clarified the text explaining when a license may be denied or revoked, the requirements for verification if that were to happen, and the opportunity for the pure. And then under the Appeal section, the text was improved upon to clarify the state of enforcement period during the appeal to the court and appeals. And finally, the Penalty section was, I'd say the text was cleaned up to make sure that the penalty provision was clearly explained. Those were the revisions that had been made. Most of those were made subsequent to the June 20th reading. And then in the pack at this evening is the content that was resulted from those amendments, along with some formatting corrections. So that's basically what the revisions in tonight's item too. There was also a lot of discussion about, there seems to be some familiarity with the Section 8 Housing Mouture Program and the way the inspections are conducted there. We had previously put together our informational bulletin, if you will, highlighting the different sections of the Property Maintenance Code and best practices in terms of property maintenance. Some wanted more definitive clarity in terms of what exactly would be looked at when these inspections take place. So we really boiled that information down to this list, which has been posted to the website for some time now. And it is focusing on those areas where there are safety and health concerns to create. So this kind of reduces, reduces the broader, all encompassing checklist down to these items right here of particular interest of the inspection firms. The entire property maintenance code remains in effect, irrelevant, but we're not there to pick over things that aren't concerns related to public health and safety. So this checklist has been created in response to the comments and the questions and they asked what this happened. And then finally, before you commission, you have the budget for the program, as we mentioned to you earlier, which outlines how we arrived at the $65 figure and gives you the details behind that as it relates to the amount of personnel hours that would be involved, the equipment, the operating costs associated with the program, the things that need to happen, and what that translates into in terms of total cost and then dividing it by the number of loan rental inspections, 4,308, we believe, based on utility and town alderger information. And so from there, we're able to pull together a budget as it relates to the expenses to administer the program. And then that's how we determine the $65 per unit with the income needed to sustain it. So I think, you know, those were some of the key items that I had from previously and I thought it would be worth taking a minute to kind of review those. And I think there's been plenty of discussion previously, so I don't want to draw on them, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the commissioners?
I have a few. There's a lot of people have been reaching out to me, which I appreciate some of the comments and questions. So a couple, if this were to be passed, when would you be looking at?
So at the, at the checklist. So the, at the work session, we had presented some dates, timeline. At the work session, I again presented some, presented the upcoming dates at that time, which had to have been only in the work session in April, falling off with the planning commission meeting and the city commission meetings leading into September. And then the follow-up to that would be that we would, in October, open up a portal for individuals to begin the registration process. And then that would carry through the end of the year. By then, we would hope to have all of the properties registered, but maybe have to do some additional work to make sure folks know what's going on. As part of that, there'd be some educational work and then educational campaign that would have to occur to make sure that those who aren't here or haven't been engaged in a conversation are aware. And so then once those registrations take place through the end of the year, the inspection activity would begin at the first of the year.
So how would you identify those addresses? People would have to voluntarily register on that portal then? Or how would we make sure that everyone's accounted for?
So we have the 4,308 addresses or units identified that would like to be rental units. So then we'd all get a mailing or notification of some sort to indicate, hey, this program has been adopted. Here's the requirements and we provide an outline of the program in detail and direct them to that portal so that they know that they can take care of that.
Okay. And if they don't register, then would there be a way of mechanism for us to be tracking that and making sure that all of them aren't?
I think we would initially work in that list that we believe to be the existing rental units. The ones that registered will be able to confirm that, okay, they've responded. The ones that don't register, then we can follow up with some additional communication, be it mailings or trying to contact them in whatever fashion we can to make sure they understand that this is happening and just like answering the questions.
My question, I got a question.
Oh, no, I don't.
I think it's hard for people to hear you yet.
My question is that we have two code enforcement officers currently. Is that correct? Are those the ones that are going to be doing that program? Or are we getting two additional ones with this money?
So you are correct. We have two code officials currently, one who has been with us since 2016. About fifty percent of his work, immense of all work, was non-owner occupied rental properties. The other portion is owner occupied properties. The second code official was brought on board for high grass and nuisance code activities that were previously handled by the health department. So that's been their primary focus. When we launched the program, provided this goes forward, we would need two full-time inspectors for the rental inspection activity to be able to maintain the cycle that has been described with regards to inspecting every property through every three years. To do that, what we anticipate happening is the one full-time inspector would focus entirely on everything that is not related to the rental inspection program. So his work right now that is causing him to be occupied with properties that may be rentals, he could shift his focus to the other activities, including the tall grass or nuisance code activity, the owner occupied properties, and getting out, proactively getting into something that may remove the right now, not able to do that because there's complaints and will allow for us to go out and look at those things. And then the second code official would shift into a role of rental inspection program, and then we would hire a third individual. So we would have the two individuals who are full-time for the rental inspection program.
So just for clarification, so the two people we have now, are they going to be the two code, just because the names are so confusing, are they going to be the two code officials, one and two, or are we going to hire, how many, how many people are we going to have?
We have the two right now. The one will remain in the role that they're in, which is for the general fund.
Right.
The, the other would shift into the rental inspection program and be code official one.
Right.
And then we would hire code official two.
Okay, that was the question.
Right. The rental inspection program is always supporting the two inspectors involved in the rental inspection program.
And then the other one who's been doing it all along will be at general fund?
It's at the general fund and he's on a budget, but it can continue that way.
My next question is, the code that we got in tonight and is on the website is in its final form. Is that correct?
That is correct. Kyle, who is sitting at the frame this evening, he and Branca reviewed it. And like you say, there were a couple of formatting improvements. They improved the language surrounding the appeal process, the state of enforcement, and the notification, which were like meaning of text that was already in there. But it is in the final form and they're satisfied and that's why we're here.
I don't know how many people out there have seen it in its final form, but I would like for them to have a chance to review it in its final form. Were there copies? Are there copies out at the table?
It's posted to the website.
Website.
Of course, it's in your file.
When was it posted on the website?
I believe it was last Thursday.
I think that the question is, there stood a lot of revisions since June 20th and/or some additions. And I think the final, just so people know, the final one that we're looking at tonight is posted on Thursday.
It was posted.
No, it wasn't. It was not yesterday. It was not up yesterday. But it was still June 20th and up yesterday afternoon when I went to see, when I went to look at it. That's the issue I have.
That's correct. It's the June 20th is the cover sheet date for the draft.
But it was updated.
But the updated one?
It's posted last week, and that's the update. That's the final information.
Okay.
And then we also added a timeline that describes the revisions that were made. So that's just to follow along when we're standing.
Chris, I have a question about the, the budget for the inspection program is separate from our general fund or the overall city budget?
It's probably, it would be part of the city budget, but it would be its own account.
Okay, alright.
So you can account for the activity related to rental inspection separate from the other activities.
So the monies that are collected will pay for that program?
Correct.
Alright.
The question with that, I know you gave a list of how that budget allows to be launched. A lot of questions on how that is. How is two people going to be able to manage it? On here also, there's admin assistant. Is that going to be under the same funding charge?
Correct. So with the registrations, scheduling of inspections, the support activities that will be required, you would also have a clerical person who would be providing the support.
Would they be dedicated to this or would they be, like mixed use?
Given the volume, I'm anticipating that this would be one person all the time.
So then three people with potential parent four hundred ten million.
Two code officials and a support person.
And then that, even with that support person still within the inspection budget running the $65 a year?
Correct.
And then there's the concern it says $65 a month. That's $65 a year, correct?
Right. It's the registrations would be $65 a year that we're here.
And the inspections would only happen, they wouldn't happen every year, correct? I know we talked about this.
So what would happen if, when the program's launched, the initial registrations would occur, the information is, who is the owner? Do they have an agent or similar party that's responsible for maintaining the property? So we would gather that information and the location of the unit and the identification, right? So then it's registered. Once they've satisfied the application requirements for the registration, they're issued a license. So the unit is now licensed and then now it's subject to inspection. So of those 4,308 units, the inspection cycle starts. Those two inspectors are not going to get $4,000 a year, right? So they theoretically get a third of those comps each year. That's also accounting for their follow-up activity that will have to happen. So they may go do an inspection and then later in the day, they may have to follow up with one that they'd inspected the previous day because they fixed whatever they fixed. So they go verify that.
I know at the June meeting, we talked about this and the idea is if everything's clear, they probably wouldn't be inspected again until like four years later or something like that?
Yeah, they inspect the property and there's no findings, right? Then it would be recorded as such and then they wouldn't have a need or reason to go back there for three years unless there's some other event that would prompt them to think that there's a need to go there.
But they still have to pay the $65 a year.
Per year.
The, the way the budget is structured, you pay $65 every year and that supports the program regardless of the properties inspected that year, year two, or three.
Can you all hear, I mean, can you all hear?
So with that, how would, excuse me, folks listen. So with the, with that cycle, if somebody does find those issues and all the, everything's abated and they're clear, would it still be, would that give them more pause to be inspected sooner than those three years? Or would they now follow on to that cycle?
No, it would, it's three years. So once the concerns have been abated, unless there's something else that prompts a need to go back out, tenant complains or some, there's visible evidence, a neighbor complains or whatever it might be, there would be no need to go back out for the three-year cycle.
What would be the, the process for deciding which houses are going to be started, how that cycle's going to be going? Is it going to be geographically, like how traffic codes are, that we're going to start in a certain area? Or is it just going to be random and then you can just run the cycle or?
So we have ideas. We're certainly open to the commission's input. One of the initial thoughts is that the county office, when they do the appraisal of properties, actually score the property. They put a grade to it. And a lot of that is weighted based upon the age of the property and the conditions they observe, which is obviously things that factor into their appraisal and valuation. We can use that as a criteria to help guide us towards the ones that perhaps are graded a little bit lower. And/or the other thought is if there's existing code violation issues that are active on one of these properties, then certainly that would bring it to the top of the list. So we're looking for some criteria. And then the other thing would be proximity, right? Efficiency of the inspector so that they're not driving from one side of the town to the other every day. Try to cluster them is another criteria that I think would be key to this. We could focus on geographic areas, but you know, then you're doing one section with community one year, another section with other years. So that may or may not be the most desired.
And then what's the process for notifying, I think there's a recent change discussed on that?
Not really change, just we clarified that in addition to the, so the owner is registered as, you know, they're the registered owner, operator of the property. The notification would go to the owner. So their property comes up, it's time for inspection, we would reach out to them, the clerical support would reach out to them and say, okay, we, we need to come inspect the property. Here's our calendar of dates that are available. And my thinking is that we're looking two, three weeks out. So we're giving them ample notice to be able to coordinate with their tenant, figure out a time that works for both of them. They let us know which of those dates and times are preferable and then we book the inspection time. And then the inspector would go through the inspection and that date.
I got more.
I have a question. I'm just looking at the budget, which is extremely helpful to thank you. It just kind of balances everything out. But my one question I have is under the equipment software pieces, so the purchase of software, do we, do we know what software provided at this point? Or I mean, do we have, it says 2,000. So, I mean, for the, for the software to run the program, is that correct? is that correct?
Correct. So there's different applications that would be suitable for running this type of program.
So this is different than the software we have for other things in the city? This is something specific, okay?
Correct. It would be specific to the licensing and component of this program. Some software packages were set up to, to handle that, whereas what we have right now is not geared for that at all.
So do we know what software we're looking at, at this point?
Civic Plus is a strong candidate, it's the same entity that we use for our website, they have a module that would work for this, there are some others. We're actually engaged right now with a, a then consultant, Faro, who is helping us update some of the hardware and software throughout the community, so we're looking for recommendations from them. Obviously effectiveness and the ability to stand it up relatively quick is going to be important. We've got some initial proposals, so that we understand what the cost implications would be, and that's why we plugged into the budget.
And it would be ready by the time implementation of the program took place?
Correct.
Oh, so in the hardware purchase, I'm assuming that's your computers?
The laptops, that's, you know, the field hardware.
And then we have the vehicle lease, the annual lease for the vehicles, which would be separate from what our code inspectors use.
Correct.
It's a, it's all, what's the ground looking for? It's a package, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they need to have a big one to get to come from the location, maybe that, the, the laptop or the, the iPad to put down inspection information, and they need the, you know, supplies to begin work with, and ask them to do.
Okay, thank you.
So the, still kind of our budget, the, there was talks before about, you know, we'll, we'll have to review it annually and see, you know, whether there be a charge, and what that annual fee would be to support the program. You have it pretty well laid out here, what other obstacles do you see coming, even in the first year, I know it's going to be a learning curve and that kind of nature, but what are the big hurdles that we have to make this operational? What unforeseen costs do you see? I mean, currently, like even, have you factored in if everybody pays a fee, if it's only sixty percent, is that actually cooperating with the program in itself? I mean, have we taken all of those types of things into consideration?
We have, so the, the budget is anticipated on collected fees, we presume that there'll be some that will be tough to, to get engaged, and so that's factored in there. I don't have any particular item that I'm thinking is going to be a surprise in terms of expenses we have anticipated. The, the unknown, we're really, we haven't ran the program. So until you run the program, you don't have data to indicate how quick, how efficiently can you inspect each property, what is the average time the inspector spends there, how many inspections then can they conduct in a day, how many times, how many properties end up with findings that require follow-up? And so until you have those, those data points, it's really difficult to guesstimate how many inspections they can complete in the course of a year, and whether or not we can maintain the, you know, the three-year cycle or keep up with the, the demand for services. I am not at all expecting that we would come back to you and say, hey, we need to raise the fee. If anything, I don't hope that.
We're trying to hold a meeting, let us ask our questions, and you all, you all can ask your questions.
All right, care about. We do, we're going to give you a chance to answer that question.
So the, the data that we have is what we use to build the budget. Once we have real data after a year or two of running the program, then we can have that conversation, but nothing changes without the commission's consent. That is entirely up to you. If you tell us to pay the sixty-five dollars, and we're, we're using money, that's sixty-five dollars, then that's what we do, that's in your direction.
And I know this is kind of a newer concept in program, but there is other ones out there that have done this correctly, and Frank talked about it, was the internal labor team, what have we reached out to those and kind of see, do they have metrics, and what their inspection rates and the effective things are expected?
Absolutely. So we've had those conversations with communities that have stood up rental inspection programs, and initially we were, we found that our, how many properties we've actively inspected, and they might be on the list, that was what they told us. So we dialed that back based upon their experiences, and what they were forming as some information that they were hearing from those communities that had tried to share their experiences to base that on.
Have they, what kind of feedbacks have they implemented, like after a year or two, have they seen improvement in their, the improvements in our rentals, and such, what in the city, like is there any data out there to support that, and support the program in itself? Or is it still too new?
Well, the, the comments were yes, there's a marked improvement in the quality of housing stock, and the, the properties in particular. Data wise, I don't know that we have any data from that tells you that, but that was the comments that we heard from. They, they also commented that it's a, it's a heavy lift, you know, it's, it's a lot of activity to manage, and you either have the right staff, and you have all the, the architecture, the programs in place, the software and everything, to be able to manage it, otherwise it can be a long road to go.
Have you planned on managing that for that first year, with it being so many of those trials in there, working with people, is there going to be some more engagement? Are we going to be working with the different landlords, finding what's going well, what's not going well?
Yeah.
What kind of feedback can we get?
That's a good question. If, let's say landlord wants to evade certain issues, are we going to be willing to work with them, or are we just going to not issue the certificate?
Well, so the, when they register, the license will be issued, and so I would say it's a provisional license, right? Because we haven't inspected it, we don't know if there are issues there. When we inspect it, if there's issues or concerns that are identified, they'll fall into one of two categories, immediate threat to life safety, health concerns, those are things that we're going to ask them to address very quickly, right? Seventy-two hours, or give us, tell us how quickly you're doing it, and how we're going to get this abated, so that we're not, we don't have someone living in a condition that threatens life, health, life safety issues. The other would be if there are items that are not a threat to life safety, we have approved track there. When folks get a violation notice, and they need to do work on their property, if they communicate with us, then we understand, I need to pay up, you need more than two days to do this, give me till the end of, you know, October, or whatever it is, we, we enter to, we have them sign a statement of intent that says that they will finish the work by that day, and then we, we have them that runway. So we're, you know, it's not going to be a heavy, which it can't be. It is, let's be realistic about what needs to be done, and let's be realistic about a timeline to complete the work, but let's also acknowledge that it needs to be done. You can't just, you know, let it go and knock for something about it.
Do you know, one big concern I heard from everyone through these meetings is that there will be an increase in rental costs by the landlords, and there will be more people evicted or can't afford it, even talking with some of those other programs that they implemented, have they, that would be an easy metric to measure to see what the rates have gone up, I mean, have we looked to see what that financial impact for people, how that might be?
I can tell you from our work session presentation, we had data that we were able to secure out of the census information, that indicated Pickle's rental rates were lagging other communities near us and or across the nation, and obviously we're different across the nation, but within our region, ours were lagging, and so if you're, if there are improvements that need to happen to bring it up to appropriate standards, so it's safe and suitable for occupancy, and that's a cost that's incurred, well, that, that's a cost that should be incurred already. If it's not being done, but it needs to be done, that has nothing to do with the rental inspection program identifying and saying, hey, I don't do this. Those are things that, you know, responsible landlords are taking care of, so the ones that are, there's no issue or concerns, it's not going to cost a bill more. If there's properties that have a lot of outstanding issues, and things that need to be addressed, and there's going to be an expense that's incurred, and how they manage that in regards to the rent rate is entirely up to them.
And then so kind of leading into that with the checklist you provided, I appreciate there's some updates there, and then the one conversations that we had were around recommendations versus actual citations, is everything on this list would be a bulk around that, I still don't see any kind of, it's not like we're looking to that there would be some stuff that would be, these are more recommendations, or, but everything on this, would it be important?
So the entire document is published on our website, so you can see every section, every chapter, every, everything that it speaks to. There are items that I describe as life safety concerns, unsafe conditions that should not exist if someone's occupying a structure. Those are the focus of what we're talking about. If there's peeling things on a property, or a guy with a disease to be repaired here, those are items that call a recommendation, or whatever you want to call it, but those are items that will take longer periods of time to address, and more attention, right? So that's not the focus. The focus is the life safety concerns, the other items are, hey, you've also got this or this or this that we need to take care of, thirty days, or how soon can we do it, let's, let's make sure these get resolved, but that's not, those are not the things that are going to draw the attention of the inspector.
Sorry, Brandon, I know you wanted to get up here, did you want to come make your comments right for, sorry, I had to talk.
I'm not a talker, guys, but here's, here's my point, here's the math, it's twelve thousand man-hours, right, to do this, over three years, about right, four thousand a year to employees, we did two hundred and eighty-seven of these every year for seven years, now we need to do, what, fourteen hundred? Just use the math. I'll help you do time studies, I did this in my profession before I was in business, I'll show you how to do this the right way, you're not going about it the right way, you have nowhere near the resources for it, you don't know what software you're going to use, table this three to six months, work it the right way, get the result you want, we don't need another half-done project in this town. If this is something you want to do, if this is something everybody wants to do, and no one over here wants, then come to us and workshop, okay? And we might do a solution. We're business owners, we run businesses, we do dolos, time studies, we do budgets, we know how to do this better than you guys.
Exactly.
We do it. We can't regulate poverty, we have to grow poverty out, we have to get people out of the country. We have forty years of development in this town, probably have a hundred million dollars back in investment right now. I can show you how that happens before. Ten homegrown owners, international investors buying houses here, several slum lords have already sold out, ask yourself why we're getting this happening, stop being so negative about this stuff, okay? We have less rent supply in this town than any town around us. Troy has forty active units, they've had forty active units for ninety days, rents are falling there. It's not always good to have incredible investment all at once, right? There's two bedrooms cheaper to rent right now than here. People are going to start moving over there, because you're making it harder to live here. We need more jobs. We want jobs. Don't think you're after, after stealing your jobs, not on saying, hey, it's not our fault that those aren't being involved, it's these slum lords. We're the ones bringing investment to this community. Think about it, you just lost your senior planner, who's going to operate this program? You're going to train someone six weeks? Take six weeks to hire someone. They're probably moving from out of town, two weeks right there. Just slow it down, come to me, I will help you do a time study, and figure out what the hours it takes. It's going to take two to four hours per inspection, fifties. Took one guy seven years to get the result of eighteen hundred. Do the math, simple math, you do it. Don't rush into this, because then you're going to have to come and do it, okay? You represent us, you hold that accountable, that's what I want.
Yeah! 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 Sorry to go off the word there, I'll shut up, so maybe we have other people, a chance to speak, but I know Brandon wanted to get his words in, it's not for the same thing.
Any other comments or questions about commissioners? Alright, we'll move on to our citizens' comments and questions, and we'll have Paul Simons come up, please.
Actually, that would be Paul Simons.
Simons.
Paul Simons, for the dot in LA, for the New York, he wouldn't be a little town like him, but it's all the same, I can't do me and Julio down by the school here. So I apologize for being jolly come lately to all of this, if it wasn't for looking briefly at Facebook yesterday, I'd still be in the dark, but I've been told the dying wife part, my wife's in hospice, and you know who insisted I come here tonight? My wife, because I told her what was going on. So I understand that there are slum lords, even in little towns like Pickle. I won't name names, but there's a few that I've heard or seen throughout the years, I've been in Pickle about fifteen years now. Here's my problem, I own one, one rental property. My tenant pays a few hundred dollars under market if, a month in rent. Some might say that makes me a bad businessman, but here's the exchange, she takes good care of my investment, i.e. the house, and my earnings from it, i.e. the rent, are enough to cover the house note with the little extra. And you might sit there and go, aha, well, you got a little extra. You know what my little extra goes to? Her dad, my tenant's dad, passed away in May. I told her, don't give me any rent for two, here's five hundred dollars, go take your kids over to see their grandfather, she was okay. That's right. She's like family to me. I treat that house as though I live there, she treats that house as though she owns it, that's our agreement, we don't need the government in the middle of all that.
Yeah! Yeah!
The city and accident ordinance, any expenses I incur from it will need to be directly passed on to my tenant. It doesn't make me a greedy landlord, it makes me a good landlord who can't afford to go into the red on an investment because the city got greedy, sorry, I'm going to call it local. Stop thinking of a big landlord as rewarding money for the agents of a few, and there are a few. Anyway, there are problems in our society. Unconstitutional government outreach is never the solution.
Exactly. Yeah! 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 Kathy Sherman.
Kathy Sherman, twenty-three, twenty-five, White Tail Lane, Pickle. I'm speaking on behalf of the residents, and not as a representative of my authority. Comments I'm making are not towards those rental property owners who have properties that are in good repair, but rather properties in disrepair. Rental properties are business, rental income should be included, and they should be figured up to include property repair and upkeep. As a personal homeowner, I need to invest in my own property, I have to keep it up to keep it in good repair, and that does not include any income from rental properties because I have them. It's my responsibility to keep my property up. Individuals should not have to live in the conditions as witnessed in the photos presented in the presentation. Nor should our residential, residential neighborhoods have to experience disrepaired houses, and my house is in the past, not currently, but I've lived in neighborhoods with rental, rental properties, and my house declined in value. When I bought the house, I didn't have rental properties, but more rental properties appeared, and the value continued to go down. Please think about those conditions for the people that need to bring their houses up to good repair, to add to the value of our neighborhoods, and continue to build upon what we're seeing growing in Pickle. I want to thank you all, this has been a tedious process, and I thank the city and everybody who brought it to this city commission, thank you. Thank you. Dana McCall.
Dana McCall, Dana McCall, eighteen-hundred, Amherst. Fifty-two years ago this month, I moved to Pickle, Ohio. I rescued a teaching job in the area, and knew and knew absolutely no one in this town. I went to a realtor in this town to see if they knew of any rentals. The realtor gave me a name, and so I contacted this man that rented homes. I went in along with my wife, my one-year-old son. We went and looked at the property that he had. The outside looked pretty good. The inside, the faucets all leak, the toilet didn't work, doors were off the hinges, holes in the wall. And so went back to him and said, you know, the property could be a good property to rent and it needs some attention. He looked at me with a sarcastic look and says, oh, I don't have to rent to you. Well, indicating that because I brought up the issue, denies me and turned me off because I wasn't in his area for renting. I did find a house in town, virtual, owned by a state highway patrol, and it was a very nice house, had no issues. And that's what we rented and lived in for some time. Fast forwarding 30 years after retiring from teaching, I went to work for Dayton Power and Light. I went to read meters. When you read meters for Dayton Power and Light, and they were Dayton Power and Light, you had to go inside many homes. You had to crawl around in basements or alleys or whatever the meters were located. And this was in 2001 through 2006. I worked with DPNA. And I can tell you all the stories of all the houses that I went into. Some were very nice. Some of them, I had to wear a mask. It was just atrocious, the smell. Even one house was loaded with fleas. And I couldn't imagine how the people even lived. I had to go out and brush all the fleas off. So there's good ones and there's bad ones. And fortunately, I've had both. And so I'm just here to give you a little anecdotal information of what I have experienced in Pickle in 52 years.
Thank you very much. Darren Gaines.
Darren Gaines, 604 West Green Street. We were shown a slide to start that started the whole program from 2007, when the economy went, excuse my language, to hell. In housing, banks were foreclosed and houses were sitting empty. And if you drove around Pickle in 2007 and compared it now, you can see a huge difference. And there's still a lot of work to be done. I know that. There's a lot of rental properties that still need to be done, taken care of. And a lot of them are the older homes. They need to be. Part of the issue is, you know, you guys sit here and make it sound like this is about the safety issue for the housing. If it was really a safety issue for the tenants, then why is it only being inspected once every three years? It should be inspected years. And it should be inspected. You know, if we rent to Metropolitan Housing, we have a Metropolitan Housing Inspection every year. Even if it's the same tenant, they come in and they rewrite up anything. You have 30 days to take care of it. And if you don't have it taken care of, they withhold your money. And they, if you don't take care of it after that, then they actually will go ahead and help the tenant move to somebody else's property. And I'm not saying that landlords shouldn't be fixing their properties up. They should be. At the same time, though, I don't believe that the city can be trusted to be running this program. I've had dealings where they condemned the building. We went to court, and that was the BCA, a court that we zoned for. We went to court, we won. We were proven the fact that we had the permits pulled. We were allowed to go back into the building. The very next day, the city re-condemned the property, so we had to go through the whole process again. And these are people, not too long ago, the city bulldozed a man's house here in town while he had permits pulled and the county had ordering signed off and they were working on the property. These are going to be the same people that are going to be coming in and inspecting and that we, as property owners, are going to have to work with. Don't be shaking your head no at me that that's not true. It is true. There's a lawsuit being filed over President's statement. Why do we, we don't need this program the way it's being set up. I think, for one, I don't think all five of you completely understand exactly what the city is wanting to do. Have you actually read through your packet and read every bit of it and completely understand it? Because as many questions was asked right before you're going to vote for it, yea or nay? It sounds to me like there is so much confusion as to what really is wanted to be expected in these inspections. And I'm not saying that the program couldn't work. I really do believe it could work. But I think it needs to be tabled and go back, as other people have mentioned, and do a panel, I think there should be a panel with some of the landlords. I think that, you know, and really cover everything on it. The language, I think, needs to be added more as to your responsibility as to tenant and your responsibility as a landlord. Once you do an inspection and it passes, and then you come back in and there's an issue, I think the city should also back up the fact that maybe it was the tenant that tore something up. Is the city going to prosecute the tenant if you actually have more than normal wear and tear? They punched big holes in it, they're mad about something. The program's already inspected and passed, but now you have all these holes and stuff. Is the city actually going to prosecute the tenants to the full extent of the law? I don't believe they will. And I really think there's anything really set up in the language of the ordinance for that. I just feel that there's more that needs to be done before you actually vote, yea or nay? I'm not saying it's a scrap of all yea. Yeah, I really think the program did good work, and I think it could really also benefit a lot of landlords to actually cover the fact that, you know, we had it inspected. Now, if something has gone wrong, it's the tenant, probably it's something that has done to it. It's not them. They did it, or it was that way when I moved in. I'm for the inspection as far as being able to cover your butt as a landlord, as a business owner. But I don't feel that the five of you completely understand exactly what the city wants to do. It's too vague yet. The language is too vague as to how to interpret. And I really honestly believe this should be on the ballot. And there's more than five of you.
Can I ask you, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay, so, were you suggesting, I just want to make sure I understand what you said. Were you suggesting that you would like to see the inspections on a yearly basis?
I believe, you're saying it's for safety. If it's for safety, it should be done yearly. You know, if you don't have a program that charges $55 a year, you should be able to have it done yearly. It really should be. And if it's the same tenants, I mean, we've had tenants that stayed at a place for 10 years before they bought a house. Technically, it should be inspected every year. You know, and I will say that sometimes there are little things that would actually slide, you know, on the landlord's end. You know, we've been guilty of it. You have a good tenant, you know, they take care of it. But maybe there's something that, you know, maybe there's an outlet that they all of a sudden tell you that don't work. You know, that should have been addressed a long time ago. But because they're good tenants and they don't bother you and they present the rent and stuff, and you know they're taking care of the place, you know, and you have something that would be caught on that. So I mean, I'm not saying inspections wouldn't be good. I'm not saying that. But I just believe that it needs to have a lot more work in this program to make it work really good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lewis Jacobin.
Lewis Jacobin, 425 South Resonant in Pickle. I know you've heard this before, but this is obviously a violation of the Fourth Amendment to our Constitution.
This is 9 of 14.
On the first 10 amendments, Whiteley passed it, Howie passed it. And I bet most people on this panel up here don't even know the history of what the 10 amendments are.
Correct.
A lot of people have misconstrued our government. They can call it a democracy, and it's not a democracy. We're a constitutional republic. When they, when they passed the Bill of Rights, Thomas Jefferson, one of the big things that they wanted to do was to keep the government out of people's private lives. They said the most important, important job was to limit the power of government and provide for individual rights. That's what this whole country's about, and it's always been that way. We keep sliding down this path, shifting away at our rights. The way it is now, a lot of people don't even think they own their homes. They think that the city owns them so that they don't feel like you anything to them. Some of these regulations they got are absolutely ridiculous. I'm not a landlord, but I read this proposal, and some of these things are, you don't mistake they have to fix these houses and stuff like it's a five-star hotel where you pay hundreds of dollars per night. Everybody needs to live in a castle. There are people in the rest of the world, a lot of people would think they're living like kings if they live in the worst place you could find in Pickle. There are, you might look around the world. I saw a show on PBS where they have people in South America. They make a living by going to landfills. And you get whatever they can, you know, to make a living. Well, some of them, they have to do theirs to often. They just hollow out a place in the landfill and they live in there. So they're right next to where they get their substance. But there's nothing anywhere near that in Pickle. And another thing, the morale in Pickle is, I've lived up in my entire life in Pickle. When we were young, he used to do nothing. Now anymore, he can't hardly do anything. We've turned into a surveillance state. And the next thing is going to come. The next thing after a surveillance state, we're going to have a police state. And I don't want to see it come to that. I'm sick of tired of this stuff. They have some of these proposals that you can't have cracks in your walls and stuff. Well, who determines what a crack is?
Yeah, exactly.
And like you have to have your, if you have an outbuilding on your property, the roof has to be matched to house or it has to be complimented. Well, who gets to decide that? Some people are like, they can have it. They're really, this is about dressing. You've got to tell somebody how to dress. There's lots of things. Everybody in this room has things they don't like that they put up with because that's what, that's what this country's all about, freedom. Everybody's got their own ideas of the way things should be. And you have to feel, you have to give and take. Because otherwise, we can't have freedom.
Exactly.
And that's, that's not the only thing I have to say tonight except probably this issue one. I'd like to see people who know on that as a professional. As a professional, we have a constitution already that is. And if they want to make it more difficult to amend the constitution, but that's a bad thing. You might think it's a good thing for your issue now, but in the future, you might want to, you might want to amend the constitution that might make it more difficult for you to do that. It's already difficult, and it's actually as big as it is already. So hope no one issues it, if you want.
Thank you.
Mr. Stare.
Trying not to do that.
What's your?
I tried to cover it, sorry. Touch there. Again, you're a little high, right? My point is this, can you hear me?
No, pull it down a little bit. Pull it down, there you go.
I like that.
That's better.
That better?
Yes.
Okay, I can't talk here. Anyway, I think you get the gist of what's going on. I'd just like to point out a couple of things that I think you already know how the feelings are of a roof and I think it's been amended. But these are, these are department heads. Mr. Petruzzo's got a private, and that, he's been doing this for years. Back in 2008, we had five referents brought up. I think some of you remember. And they were very, well, the civil bodies had, three of those were being repealed in December of 2008 by this commission. Two that we didn't, well, weren't that important. It was about grass and overage and stories. The other one was a non-conforming building that sat up here for two years. It couldn't be done. We were using without, follow his own. That was the one two we lost. Everything protected, the fines, inspection processes, overall regulations was kicked out. Let's bring it back up to a different backdoor approach. And things are going to do this by fineing all the people. You know, talk about the inspection fees, that's one thing. The license fee is a control thing. The inspection, when it's done, how many thousand dollars you may have to spend because they don't like the color of your roof. Or they don't like some small thing which is done pertaining to the safety of the house. These are what's going to be done. I get stories every day of how they come out. The inspector will tell you something, and he has to run by Mr. Petruzzo. He's not an inspector, he has no qualifications in status. Anyway, you know, he picks it, and it, you know, he does, he gives you a paper and says, okay. I mean, the process is not even handled. So Mr. Speedy over here, he's great at getting grant money. Let me explain a little bit about this. Hit the code violations on some of your building downtown or whatever. We want you to bring it up to code and this stuff. Well, I can't afford it right now. These people are trying to make a living, they're paying the payment, it's water, or they don't. They're not making any money. I can't do all this right now. So he says, well, here, I can get you some grant money if you can match these funds. We could get this done. So you get it all done, and he said, I'm pretty good. That seems great enough to code. But this poor guy is in debt. He got the grant money, then he says, puts his arm around it and says, well, let me tell you this. Now that we're a part of their business because we've got a best buddy here, you have to maintain this, continue on this. You can't sell or transfer for so many years or whatever, or we'll claim your money back. Well, I can't pay you back without selling the business or something to pay you back. So what did I gain? But he don't tell you the whole story of what it was all about. He gets the slack because he beautified something. We get the debt. So you've got to remember how that goes. I'm going to hand you this online because I know you heard it all. But I want to point out, all five of you, I don't know which one of you has, and took you to the office when you just, when you started. Hold your hand up. I just want to read it real quick, just real quick, this is sent. Every officer who did it in front of the cameras, in front of the public, I solemnly swear that I will obey the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the state of Ohio. I will, I will, at all respects, observe the provision of the charter and ordinances of the city of Pickle and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of commissioners wherever you are. And each one of you took that note. Tonight, stick up for your citizens. Let them know that you were put in office to protect and serve, not control. Don't let these guys fool you with all the passes in. Put you on the death, pardon my grammar. We've been handling problems with the rentals. You have a few people that did that after, a few, you know, that's technical. The rest of them, the most are applying. You have happy chances. The buildings, they may not be the top hall, but they're safe. And everything works and whatever. They think it's as pretty better than not being safe. Pretty is one thing, but safe is the other. We have to, we have to have a norm. We have, we worked out more and how it's all, I go home, and I went in, I rewired the roof on it, the roof's on, did all this stuff. If I had to hire all that done, I couldn't afford to do it. And I know all the regulations you got to go through. They want to come in here and charge you, you know. I don't have $10,000 and 30 days to get it done. So you're going to hook me in jail? That's what happens? That's really the way the truth is, city. I'm going to tolerate that. I appreciate your tolerance. I hope I get the message from the people in the room. I think it spoke pretty well for you tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'm gonna be one of the bad guys that say I'm in favor of an inspection program. And I wanna give you a little reason why, over the years, is I've served the community for quite a number of years, and have been in a lot of houses that were owned by the so-called slum landlords. There are a lot of good landlords out there, let me tell you. They have a lot of good decent property that you can rent and be a part of. They take pride in their workmanship and their ability to provide that. It's the other ones that make it hard for them. I give you a couple of examples. In the middle of the night, you go into a house, and there's no heating house. The landlord said that there's too much money to fix the furnace. So what the landlord knew, according to the tenant, you know, was very disrespected, was he cut a hole in the door, put a Nipto heater in there. So the Nipto heater's blowing hot air into the house, and that was acceptable to him. I've been in a house that they've always smelled gas, didn't know where the gas was coming from. We found a gas one that was an open sewer line in the basement, and the basement was filled with the waste. Again, the landlord was told about it. The landlord said, "Too expensive. They don't like it. They can leave." You know, I've been in houses where the fleas and cockroaches and everything else were so bad that they were physically walking over the people when you went in at 2:00 AM or more. And when you walked through the house, you heard cranking. The lights didn't work because of the electric service in that room, because again, it wasn't gonna be fixed. On top of that, I knew a personal individual who no longer lives in the community, but owned quite substantial number of rentals. They were all bad. They were all Section 8 housing, and I've often questioned him and her. Why don't you just think outside? His answer was always, "I'm not wasting my money, because the people aren't worth it." And I asked him if he would live in that environment. And his word was, "Absolutely not. He would not live in one of those." He's not gonna do it. He's not gonna fix it up. He says, "The people are the problem." You know, sometimes you have to evict people. And then I've heard stories that were gonna prove it, homeless people. I don't think the counties gonna let that happen. There's plenty of, it's a big problem. Thank you. So, and I personally know a number of homeless out there that I grew up with, and they'll tell you, if they're not gonna live in the house, you can give them a free house all you want, but they're not gonna live there. They prefer to live outside. They receive money each month. So creating so-called homeless people, I don't know if it's gonna happen or not. There's plenty of places in the county that people don't live in. So, but I am in favor of, maybe there is more communication in the new take place. I don't know. But again, I will say that there are a lot of good landlords out there, but there are a few who have hurt everybody. So, thank you, everybody.
I must apologize. I cannot read this gentleman, this person's name. They live at 406 Stone Street.
Shallow Austin, 406 Stone Street. I'm also vice president of Shawnee Neighborhood Association. You know, you guys are sitting here wanting to, you know, increase all these fees for the landlords, which I agree, some houses do need to be fixed up. They are being fixed up at a slow pace because we're trying to keep the rent down to let the people be able to afford to live there. If we jump our rent up to $1,000 a month, the houses, you're gonna have people moving out of the City of Pickaway like crazy. You know, and we cannot afford to dump $10,000, $15,000 into it. Six months later, they tear it up. I've had houses where they moved out, they busted every fixture in the house, they hooked holes in the ceiling. I've talked to law. Oh, it's just excessive living. There's nothing we can do. You take them to court, you're out of court money, you're out of lawyer money, nothing's ever done. You know, sometimes you need to start backing the landlords. You know, I'm not saying all tenants are bad, but there are some bad tenants. You know, and, you know, just like the gentleman before, cockroaches, okay? If you have somebody that lives on a home for four or five years, they pay the rent on time, you have no problems out of them, then all of a sudden, they have cockroaches? Is it the landlords want to have cockroaches? No, it's the person that lives there because somehow they even brought it in, or some way that they had it there. You know, it's not the landlord's responsibility all the time to take care of babysitting the tenants anymore. You know, they're all grown adults out there. And you guys will create a lot of homeless people. You know, even the rental properties out here, it's hard to find a house to rent where you have an apartment out there anymore. You know, you can talk to anybody, and they'll tell you, they can afford increasing, you know, on rent, everything. So I'm just hoping you guys table it, go back and think about it, what you're going to do to the community, and the devastation that you're going to give to people. Thank you.
Joe Wilson, 11 West Green. I'm in favor of the ordinance. I think if you table it and make whatever changes, people will still be against it, no matter what you do. So I think there's been a lot of good change done on it so far to make it better. At every time, it's been a meeting, there's been some improvements, and I think we're good. I've heard objections on the legality of this whole thing. You have a city attorney who you're paying to get his opinion, and he says it's legal, and I believe it is legal. As far as, as far as the cost of the program, the cost of $65 is a little over $5 a unit per month.
No, it's per unit.
I said that. I said per unit. $5, a little over per unit.
No, $65 per unit.
Okay. Let it talk. It's a little over $5 per month, per unit. That's what I said. And that's not a lot of money. As far as the cost, as far as the cost of the, anything that you have to do for safety reasons, that should have been done prior to the inspection anyway. We need to bring our stock up to standard. We can't have unsafe conditions. So if you have to pay to make something safe, you should have done that before, and you should be required to do it. I don't know how many of the units are unsafe right now. It's probably a minority of the units, but we don't know. So I think we owe it to the people living there to give them a safe place to live. And even if it graces the rent, it needs to be done regardless of the rent implications. But again, they should have had a way of doing this prior to this ordinance anyway. So I hope you'll go ahead and not table it, because you'll just have more opposition regardless of what you do. And again, most of the laws that you make, the city are for a minority of the citizens. I think that's probably a good case here. So again, I think you should vote for this. Thank you.
Good evening. Commissioners, thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing all of us to speak. I'd like to open tonight with a quote from Plato, which is, "The measure of a man is what he does with power." We're all getting a ring site seat to this tonight, and we're hoping that our commissioners hear us, hear your people, and represent us, supporting me. When I met with several of you about the house that was holdous, was already been mentioned, all that was communicated to me was that you had jumped in, that you'd done all the things, and this house was set for being demolished. I prayed before I came here tonight to have something to add to the conversation, because I feel like that's what's missing. There's no more conversation. The citizens are no longer being heard. It's what it feels like. Everything we can make is communicated. The children's house was holdous despite there being things. I'm going to protect it, and I ask you all, this is a family that wants to save a home. And it was like, no, we've done what needed to do. We're gonna get rid of it. That's what this continues to feel like tonight, this collective attitude, that you've done what needs to be done, move on. We look at, we're looking at citizens, at the failures of the city. Our parks are not as sanitary they were. Hans Pavilion is unusable. We lost the city pool that we had for our kids and our families. The only favorite thing for our town is downtown, which I'm not taking little kids to downtown. People aren't taking grandkids to downtown. Bring us other things. Invest in our parks. Invest in your citizens again. And you tell us that you care, but as Carl Jean said, you are what you do, not what you say that you do. And we'd like to see action shown to us. At the last meeting, we even covered a bit of confusion with people claiming they know, knew that about this GW Bailey. And then there's an article from 2022, we feel like will not be spoken to honestly by our representatives. The Art of War tells us that we are to respond intelligently to unintelligent treatment. So intelligently. This ordinance is reaching into private property and a private business. If I am paying rent, then the roof over my head is a private place to live. It's a privilege. Riotation of the Fourth Amendment rights was a worthless search as a renter, and that's what's proven in the City of Portsmouth, Ohio. It's also redundancy. There's already a remediation process. If I have a problem with my property, if I'm a renter, I can go to the court. I can call the city. There are things I can already be done. It's not needed to happen this way. Happy's concerned about property values, understandable. But those are things that can be viewed from the outside of property. You don't need to come inside them to address those. For Jim Roth, you said you saw issues in Section 8 properties. I believe those are already inspected. So those properties are fortunately protected. And for Joe Wilson's comment, we owe it to the people who live here. Yes, we owe it to the people to hear what they're saying, and they're speaking out to you that this is not what they want. Ultimately, you know, every man is guilty of the good he did not do. That's something Voltaire, and I'm so cheered with that. So I'm actually ultimately going to call upon myself and all the citizens that we need to start building the community that we're looking for, because it's not gonna come from our leadership, apparently, or asking, or none. I ask all of you, just hear your citizens, commissioners, please understand that this is not something that's wanted. It is overreached. It is seen as nothing but another way to generate a revenue stream, and we just would like to not. I have a minute ago, I would like to add, as we leave this beautiful facility, this fantastic area, Pickaway really does have a lot to offer. And I'm tired of working at the county level and hearing people talk to me about, "Why would you want to live in Pickaway? Who wants to go to Pickaway?" I'd like to show them why you want to live in Pickaway, and that's what we want to do. Please help us in that vision. That's what your citizens are looking for.
Pickaway. Guys from the ashes, right? That's what the name of each one. Are we going to or we're ready now? And I'm asking this because I've heard people talk tonight in favor of this. But when I've listened to them, I've also heard their view on the man. I'm a person who does not believe that I am any better in any manner than the next. I live and breathe and die the same as every individual without the materialistic items that I own, have, or become accustomed to. So I don't judge people. I don't judge people on Section 8. I don't judge people because they're rich. What I do feel is that because this is based on renters, is there something wrong with our renters? I mean, are they a lower class? I'm looking for an answer, because this is clearly discrimination. So it's not a safety issue, because if it was truly about safety, we're looking on every door, not just strangers. Over the last couple of months, this has given me a great opportunity to pick a lot of the landlords here. And we do have some landlords that need to work. And Chris, a lot of you have seen me for years saying the same thing. Some of these houses are ridiculous. I've never, ever objected to that. What I will object to is selectively targeted renters that are gonna object to. Because again, if it was to involve all homes, that would be one thing. It doesn't. We raised the study from the ashes. Last meeting, there was something said, what, over 100 volunteers in our community? That what we have? Hundred people that work full-time jobs, take out of their time to go help the idea. That speaks a lot about a community. Now, I'm gonna tell you, there's been some senators that have spoken out about this. And one of the things that Robin caught, and I think it's in the poll, he said, "Rent control leads to reduction in housing supply and makes it harder for low-income tenants to find affordable places to live." And I'm gonna give you a quote. "Every other place that has done this in this country has resulted in disastrous consequences." Now, I'm not saying that a lot of houses don't need to be bought, because they do. Nobody's objective to that. But as Brandon said, there is another way, a better way to do this, a much better way. And there have been people from the community who haven't even tried to submit ideals. You know, we don't need a regular registration fee. We don't need another daddy government at our door. What we need is a community that will entrust and work with its citizens, not one that wants to take them over. There has to come a point when agendas for coworkers are met and duties are upheld. And what your citizens are asking you guys is, meet with Brandon. Meet with him. Go over that. Table it. Discuss it three, four, six months down the road. Right now, we have to know about the software. We have two employees that are going to be full-time. We have no real answers. We have a bunch of scrambled words on a piece of paper and whatever may come with it. I'm not much of a dementia person. I like stability, and stability only comes with certainty. Everything about this is uncertain, except it's not at work. That's how we are. You know, you've had people up here tonight that have invested millions, and I mean millions, in this community. And they've told you guys, "Look around you. It's getting better." You can't change something that has been let go for, and Chris, I'm not completely accusing you or Aaron of this, because there was a great portion of priority of you guys that lacked doing their job. I will 100% acknowledge that. This is a 20, 30-year process. But what I'm saying is, it took us 20 or 30 years to get here. We're working on moving out of it. Let's get out. Let's not put more burden on our citizens, on our renters. Because I'm gonna tell you right now, if you guys pass this tonight, I've been meeting with these landlords, and if you think they're joking or not, if already got a four-year land of, they'll sign paperwork tomorrow morning if this passes tonight. It will be emailed. They will sign it. They're ready. And that's not true, my fellow. We're going to be signing a discrimination case, because I should face no more repercussions as a renter than you guys do with private homeownerships. There's no way either. When you take one grouping of people and you separate them by any definition, it's discrimination.
I ain't got too much to say after all this. I wanna say something, I wanna explain. I ain't got too much to say after this, but I wanna say one thing to one of the convicts up there. When I turn around and walk away, don't talk about, "All right, yes, we, they know who they are." Don't say, "Yeah, because we got my cake." Know who you are. Okay, number one, it's Chris Mead. I've known him for years. He been quartered for us. He said it happened a long time ago. I ain't said who the fuck was a long time ago, who was on the job a long time ago. But he went to force us. When he was behind the desk, did he get out of the event? If he did, he wouldn't have the 20, 30 carports you're tearing down if he does his job. You wouldn't have other stuff. You would have the way it is now if you would have done his job to clean this town up. done his job, been cleaning this town up. But then he had 33 years in office, what has he done? Chris, tell me one thing you've done to help people to sound, tell me one thing you've done to help people to sound. That's what I thought, nothing, that's all I got to say.
Kevin Lofton, Pickwa Village Apartments, 1345 Covington Avenue. A lot of mine from the first two meetings have been validated, means Brandon eloquently talked about logistics, first thing I brought up. One of the things I'm curious about, I do have a section eight, every one, two, three years, depending on my react, they come out and inspect, why do I have to be part of the program we're running, required to be? I got a good awakening last summer, because my ownership changed, and I know, well, I probably only know 10% of what they had to go through, all the inspections I had to go through, asbestos, lead, everything that I had to be part of, the one they had to do, just to be approved by the government to take over my property. I go through this every one, two, three years where I have to be inspected, the better the score I get, the later I see them. It does prove that these inspections work, because I don't know if any of you really been to Pickwa Village the last four years, it was actually pointed out to you by someone who is here, I'll keep them nameless, but Pickwa Village actually has, at one point in time, two Facebook pages, making fun of Pickwa Village. My wife lives, we live in Sydney, she works there, they tell her where, she tells people where I work, and they cringe. But over the last four and a half years, I have been able to bring that back, but I've followed what HUD has put up in front of me, and I follow those rules. So why am I being almost penalized again, having to get a license that our federal government has already given us permission to do? Everyone that does measure or Section Eight or HUD, we have these government things that we already follow, why do we have to be part of it and pay $65 per unit, when the government is already making us do it? But if the inspections are done the right way, it could work. The last two meetings, and people before me today, have shown there are so many holes in this ordinance, that it's not going to do what you want it to do. As a lot of people have said, let's table this, we've got bones in structure here that we can work with, let's make it the way that it needs to be, if you really want to do this, let's do this the right way the first time, so we're not playing, let's figure it out, because it's going to be a lot harder to adjust this. I'm sorry about the feedback, I don't know what I'm doing, so my apologies. But let's make this, so we can do this right the first time, so we don't have to try to fix this on the fly, so we don't have people that are upset. If you really want to do this about safety, let's do this right the first time.
Thank you.
Tom Homan.
Hello, Tom Homan, 203 Pickwa Avenue. Just a couple of quick questions on some of the stats, you guys say it was about 4,500 units that you're anticipating this will cover? Four to 3,000, or 4,300? What percentage of those are being anticipated being violation right now? Do you have a ballpark, is it like 50%, 10%, 1%? Anything?
I think that's a perfect question I asked earlier, understanding that that first year it's going to be in this, that's where we all know until we know.
We don't even have a ballpark though? No, I'm asking if you've done any research.
We know from what we do already, that these conditions exist, but there is no way to know of the 4,300 new units, how many of them might have substantial conditions, because we haven't been, we don't know. But we know that some of them are entered into, we see some of the conditions that we all have reference to this even.
When you say that you know that some of them have those conditions, do you have a percentage of completed, even ballpark count? But it's not your question, I'm trying to see if there's any due diligence on what the need for this program was. It seems, it sounds like we've got a pretty big solution here, a large program that's going to involve, you know, essentially trying to touch 4,300 houses every three years, and we don't even know if that's going to solve the problem, or what the extent of the problem is. There's a lot of talk about the severity of the problem, we don't really have a good idea of what the scope of it is. Certainly, nobody wants to have people living in squalor, I don't think that the comparisons of Pickwa to people living in landfills of third worlds is a very good one, I think that we can have some higher standards here. But we are talking about kind of a few lingering aspects here, you know, we have five scary pictures upon the slides there, and those are the first pictures that I've seen in the last, you know, this is the third reading, and those are the first five pictures I've seen of this problem that we've got here. And so while yes, maybe there are a few scary houses out there, is maybe a more targeted solution more appropriate? Is it really that we need this broad expanses program, it's going to be touching 4,300 homes, when we don't even know what the percentage of that is? Would this money be better spent on a more targeted program, maybe a refocusing of how code enforcement is done? Which brings me to another point, is, so, there's been some discussion about how many labor hours it's going to take to actually accomplish touching 4,300 homes every three years. I know in previous readings, Mr. Schmieden, you mentioned that maybe some discretion would be put in place where some houses that maybe were passing the code a little better, maybe they have two extra years, so that you guys can kind of prioritize which ones you're, which ones you're going after, is that kind of discretionary basis, is that still part of the plan, or is that something that's changed?
As I recall, the comment pertaining to if you go inspect a property and there's no findings, then we have no reason to re-charge that property for three years. So the anticipated inspection cycle was three years, and not like, it's not about three years, so it's a, it's a cycle, to touch it frequently enough, but not to go there anymore when necessary.
If you were, if you were, you know, if you're not able to touch all 4,300 homes, are you going to be de-prioritized with the nicer looking ones, or maybe going after some of the other ones more frequently, is that the plan?
No, I think I addressed this earlier, when I talked about putting in place a criteria that would look at no data points to determine which ones would be most appropriate to focus on. So if you've got county auditor appraisal information that evaluates the age of destruction and the condition of the structure from that aspect, then that's one criteria.
And then just real quick, is that criteria, that's something you're going to be working on over the first year of the program, is the thing you've got now?
That's something that we need to develop between now and the first year before we start the inspection process.
Stephanie Lanning Show. Benjamin Fugit.
Excuse me, one second, I arrived late, and I'm not on the list, and I would like to be added to the list and speak to the council tonight. I need to be added to the list, please, I was late, my list wasn't there for Tuesday signing on.
We'll get to you after. Ben Fugit. B.J. Cooley.
Benjamin Fugit, 1413 Broadway Street, here in Pickwa. Wendell Phillips, the famous abolitionist from the 1800s, said that eternal vigilance is the price of liberty, and power is ever stealing power from the many to get to the poor, or to get to the few, sorry. But the power of license is the power to take away, and Jefferson and Madison spoke frequently about the eternal vigilance for both the local and the national citizen. Madison wrote, "All men having power ought to be distrusted to a certain degree. The renter signs contracts and is free to not know. Secret meetings are repugnant to a free republic, and manipulated meetings are obviously, that are obviously against the will of the people, are no better." It's all grass issues, has anybody ever walked the bike path? And when you have the cemetery, and the grass was knee-high plus, I understand that it was during COVID, and parts were hard to find, and so forth and so on, but would the people be given the same grace that you guys expected of? And I want to do some quotes here that was said, and I quote, "believed to be rentals", and quote, "believed to be existing rentals", and quote, "now that this license is subject to inspections", end quote, in this very meeting. And, you know, tenants complaining, yeah, we've heard from both sides here, the Civic Plus program, has anybody looked up that and seen from the employees, how they felt about the Civic Plus program itself? It's got three stars. So I just, I cannot believe, I cannot believe that we're at this place, I mean, obviously, listen to the, those that are for it, I mean, you know, and then the those that are against it, obviously, I think the public has spoken, thank you.
B.J. Cooley, so you guys want this program to make you feel better and housing mattered? I got a solution for you. I will come in on my time off of work, and on the weekends, and help these landlords make the places better, that way you're not charging them the money, you can look at me if you don't, that's fine, I don't care. And we make it better, okay? And then, and then, I'll lose heart to this, I'll take any of you in here that are for this, to work a month, making what I make, paying the rent that I pay, which is $1,000, okay? Back in February, if I don't work, I don't get paid, back in February, because I have heart issues, I went to work, should I? Probably not, but I did, because that's the kind of person I am, okay? Get to work, have a chest pain, shortness of breath, get to the locker room, text my supervisor, I'm at work, but I'm having chest pain and shortness of breath, they take me off my squad, my work, my HR, after I took the paper into them, tried to get me a fair no call, no show that day, okay? I didn't get paid for that day. So if I don't work, I don't get paid, so I'll take any of you in here that are for this, to charge these landlords the $65, to trade me for a month, two months, making what I make, paying the rent that I pay along with my bills, okay? Like I said, I'm willing to come in on my time off, and have the landlords buy the supplies and he fixes it together, instead of charging them the $65. To me, it's all about money, you can say what you want, you can disagree, you can agree, I don't know the difference. I don't know if you've all heard that song, Jason Aldean, "Try to Small Town", they tried to get him saying that he's racist and all this stuff, he ain't racist. Go listen to the song, I don't get mad racist, watch the video, won't see another racist senator. As a matter of fact, I talked to you not too long ago about this, like I said, I'm willing to come in when I get off of work, and help these landlords fix it up. I pay up $1,000 a month in rent, you think I can afford that on top of the $65? Like I said, if I don't work, I don't get paid, so I'm at work every day, like I said, back in February of this year, they picked up my squad because I was having, I almost had a heart attack, that's how close it was. Took three actions and three nights of listening, and I still wasn't comfortable. So you want this? Be my guest, you could probably be seeing me in the Dallas street, that's all I got to say.
I'm here as a Realtor, landlord, and a citizen of our own city. I was in attendance for the last two readings, as well as the landing commission meeting regarding ordinance, I have tried to keep an open mind and listen to both sides of the argument. First thing I'd like to ask is that you call it what it is, it is an inspection program, not a registration program. There is a difference between an inspection and a registration. Many cities require a registration to have accurate information on the owner and accurate contact information, should anything be wrong with the property, such as a code compliance issue, so that they can be contacted at a time and demand corrected. As a Realtor and a member of both the Ohio Association of Realtors and the Midwestern Association of Realtors, members of these associations are actively engaged in the real estate profession, including buying, selling, exchanging renting, leasing and managing, and appraising for others. The Ohio Realtors is the state's largest professional trade association with more than 36,000 members. MORE is our local association and represents more than 450 members over six counties. Both share the mission to advocate, engage, and lead to protect private property rights and enhance the real estate industry. Last commission meeting, you heard from our executive officer, Amy Wise, I think it bears repeating that both of these organizations oppose this ordinance. Two very large, active organizations comprise the members who make their livelihoods off of the real estate market. I personally earn a living off the sales of homes in our community, and yet I stand before you today in agreement with them and oppose the ordinance. I know firsthand that rundown houses, uncut neighborhoods affect property values, often deter the sale of beautifully cut, neighboring homes, and on a larger scale deter developers and attract businesses when it becomes a community warning program, which I agree is what we have. So it seems contrary that I, as well as several other real estate agents, would oppose this measure, after all, we make more money when cells, homes sell quickly and at higher prices. So why? Because private property rights matter and act at the core of every aspect of our industry. I do 100% advocate for safe and affordable housing for all, I understand that there are landlords who do not maintain their property, and shame on them for taking people's hard earning, working money and not providing that safe housing, I am not here to advocate on their behalf. As a landlord, the issue I have with this ordinance is mandating that every rental property in the city be included, it is an unnecessary burden to the majority of landlords if you can maintain your investments. You're in the statistics provided in the April 24th presentation to support that. There are far better and more economical measures I can be proposed to correct these concerns without causing hardship to the responsible owners or tenants, which are the majority. Speaking of majority, we keep hearing of the health and safety for the tenants, I have not heard of one tenant who supports this, in having managed over 300 complex units, and dealing with tenants on a regular basis, to schedule showings and other inspections, tenants do not want people in their homes, and they know this, this is their home. They have a green loan for landlord to pay where they, to pay to live there, not much different than homeowners who have a mortgage to pay in order to beat their home. Other cities like Springfield have adopted an inspection, however, it's not an inspection done by the city, it's done by the tenant, who is paying to live there. The tenant is provided a piece of paperwork to go and inspect their property, to report if there is any safety issues that is a concern for them, provide that to the city, and then there's a measure taken to get that corrected. That's a far economic, more economical way than funding and staffing an entire department. Ohio's landlord tenant law is very comprehensive, and compared to other states, very pro-tenant. Ohio's landlord tenant law is very comprehensive and compared to other states, very pro-tenant. As mentioned numerous times in previous sessions, there are remedies in place already that are no cost to the tenants. There have been numerous other cities' township that have enacted similar, have safe wellness, have safe wellness, and studies show these inspections ultimately can hardship on the tenants. As a citizen, seeing me before you, I want others best for our city and all of our residents. I appreciate the staffing the cities that have dropped to see and address issues that arise and have a negative impact on the community and propose solutions to correct it. I hold arguably that tenants have a safe and happy place to live, and if that is at the core of what we are trying to correct and improve, I believe in this ordinance that more harm than good. You've heard many opinions on the matter, there has not been one person prior to this evening that has spoke in complete favor of it, not one.
You need to talk, your time is up.
Paul Boris, Hardwood. I have been a owner, occupied, resident's provider. And I've had a tenant ask that, even though I've worked with them and in later years worked with their mother, I did not expect to see the condition that they kept their apartment. So I've, I've seen both sides, and I've had renters that were glad based on their income to be able to find a place that fit their retirement income. Granted, photos that are in the presentation that Chris showed earlier are despicable. Myself as a residence provider would not do that to a renter. I wouldn't expect anybody else, and there's other providers that I know that would also be involved in this. My one question is, granted, those photos are probably several years old, but are those properties that are owned by individuals that are located here now, or are they not owners from here in town? So are they aware of the conditions or not? Secondly, I'd like to point out something that I did not address at the last meeting, and after looking at the website today, I feel it needs to be addressed. We've been told that the ordinance has been updated. It does not look any different to me on the website, it's still beta June twentieth. I work for a manufacturer and in fact, in the engineering department that takes care of documentation, we have to mark our revisions. For only the good of a manufacturer is what we can put out on the floor to ship out to the customer. You know, we're putting through something, discussing something that's going to be accountability for the property owners here. What about the accountability of the staff, the city manager, and the commissioner? We were told that the questions, and I thank you, Chris, for bringing that up at the last meeting, about the questions and the concerns. That document is now on the website. That document was generated on the twenty-fifth of July. The date is in the file name. That's one week after the last meeting, that's over four weeks, when that was asked. So, you know, where is the accountability in this? You know, if you couldn't revision on a document, you need to address a date of when it was revised as well as what the revisions were. You know, this is not the US Congress with former speaker that said, "Let's vote for it so we can find out what's in it."
Exactly.
Let's know what's there so we understand it and we can work from a good source and document. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stella and I moved here from California about fifteen years ago. And I did a homeowner and a renter, so I've been in hope. And the reason why we became homeowners is because there are some landlords that do not fix their places. My daughter got sick with lip poisoning, we kept calling the city to do something about it, they never did anything about it. We moved to another place and the landlord had bedbugs and said that it was going to be our fault if we found it. Thank God I found it before we moved so that we could get our deposit back. Um, I'm not saying that there aren't some landlords that are good, but there are some landlords that are not. So we became homeowners because we didn't want to deal with the problems that we kept having, especially for our children. I'm not really a realtor, I don't know really the history, but there's some landlords that keep coming up, their names, that they absolutely do not want to do anything about. So I do understand some of the ideas that you guys are trying to come up with are very good, but some, like this paper that I received, I really didn't know that this was going on, but it says that you guys want to come into our homes without permission or have warrants to search, that I do not agree with. I feel like there should be other ways, there should be a number, there should be someone where we can contact and have pictures and bring stuff to them to say, "Hey, they're really not doing anything about this," um, so that our voices aren't hurt. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeff Grimes. Jeff Grimes, thirteen fourteen, May fourth. Last meeting, did any of you guys look at the rental rights and responsibilities that I told you about? One? One of you did, in fact? Tenant rights and revenues. It's already available through Miami County, there's no need for this, okay? Wow, where do I start? Where do I start? The city has top thirty-six people that work for the city, all make over a hundred thousand dollars a year. That totals almost four million dollars, and you want to add to the burden of the government, and it's unacceptable. How about an eight-hundred number that if a tenant has a problem, they call you and you investigate that? There'd be no sixty-five dollars, there'd be no intrusive on a good landlord. Not going to cost anyone, an eight-hundred number? Think you guys will afford that? Let's see. So you said sixty-five dollars a year for each rental, but you won't inspect it every three years. Will you charge the sixty-five dollar a year? Sixty-five dollars times forty-five hundred dollars, two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, uh, two ninety-two five hundred. Take that money and go into the houses and fix people's houses with the three hundred thousand dollars, hell nah. Second reading should have been tabled, third reading, you guys still don't have anything, it's concrete, it should be tabled. Why would you pass this if you know that you're going to be taking a court? Are you listening to us if we're going to sue you? That's what it costs a citizen more than. Uh, let's see. I wasn't sure about the Metro. If it's inspected with Metro, will you still charge sixty-five dollars? I wasn't sure if that was any true. Chris? Chris, if it's Metro, will you still charge sixty-five dollars?
The program, all properties would be subject to the ordinance. So the conversation we had with Keith Underlin, the director, a second, reminded about planning housing for you, was that he didn't believe this program could inspect him to have his program and that he would still be, it would still be necessary for him to do his inspections. And he also commented that there are occasions where they do an inspection and the property passes or they approve it. I need to realize, within a few months later, there are new issues. So he was actually enthusiastic towards the fact that the city might do this, feeling as though there could be some things that are getting past them that would be subsequently discovered. So yes.
So if the Metro inspected and they approved, two months later, there was another issue, wouldn't that have been caused by a tenant? Not the landlord, if you already inspected it? Okay, so did you guys think about if you come into somebody's house, what if they've got a dog? Okay? What if that dog bites somebody? What if the dog gets loose and runs around the neighborhood and bites someone? What if you inspect it and have your league, gray mall's jewelers? There's cash in this. Have you guys thought about that? Do we have an exact figure for how much this is going to cost us? Four, four more people to work for you, cars, um, fuel, upkeep, um, retirement. Who did it inspected first? We're going to throw it all in the hat and jiggle around and pick them all out? Is that how we're going to do it? You're going to inspect people's houses in the summer, but your thing says that the heat has to be to a certain kind of temperature, right? So if you inspect somebody's house in the summer, how are we going to do that? You're backing away?
Mr. Grimes, your time is up.
You're going to inspect the roofs.
Mr. Grimes, your time is up.
Everybody's going to climb up and get on the roof and inspect them. What do you fall through? It's just so much overreach.
Mr. Grimes, your time is up.
Time's up. Read the Fourth Amendment. If you guys pass this, then you're a joke. Thank you.
It's Tanya Blair.
Thank you.
And I echo everything that Laura Bates said here tonight, and I know that Ohio Realtors sent you a package, I hope you all got that, and I hope you read it. You guys are looking at me like you're deer in headlights. I was told that Frank had prepared a package from Ohio Realtors that you were all going to have before this meeting tonight. Frank has been corresponding with the attorneys from Ohio Realtors, and so therefore that's enough reason right there to table this. And I think Jeff brings a great point up about the liability issues on myself being a Realtor. I've had an open house, they had a tenant that lived there. That tenant left the house kind of messy and I'm kind of a neat freak, so I'm cleaning. Only thing I touched in that house was a broom, a dustpan, and a chair. And I got accused of stealing tools. I would never steal anyone's anything or I wouldn't have been a Realtor. So I just hope that you think about that because this could happen to a city employee and I would hate to see that happen to them. My clients fortunately believed me, knew that, they knew my character, they knew me, and they knew that I would not do such a thing. But you can't have that feeling with everybody, so people will be, will do that. I do have a question about the budget. Um, there evidently is two employees right now that are in this department, and one is not going to be on the budget anymore, so therefore we, as landlords, are going to be expected to fund that other employee, and I don't think that's fair either because he's being taken off a job he was already doing, and obviously we had a need for it. So.
Tanya, if I could respond, we did not get a packet, but we did get an email from Mr. Patrizio, so I apologize. I was, when you said packet, I was thinking.
There should have been a packet, that there should have been something from Ohio Realtors in this yet. Okay? So I, I hope you would consider all of our feelings, really, I mean, everybody in this room, I've been all three meetings, I've been planning commission, I feel like that you guys are going to hold those through whether we like it or not. And it's very unfortunate, I come into this meeting tonight feeling like I wanted to cry and be ashamed of being a citizen because it's not, not working. We have two pools in my lifetime that have closed down. We have schools this year, do you know what the school score was this year? For school year of twenty twenty-three, our kids got on tests five out of ten. That is very low, we're in the lower fifty percent. This is not good. Our kids have nothing to do, we need stuff for them to do. And I think you guys know that, we've brought it up to you numerous times, so I thank you all for your time and please, please table this.
We're listening to you.
I can't read your last name. Philip?
Address.
No address.
Philip?
What's that, Greggers?
Philip Greggers.
And I can't read this one either.
That's a tough one. Says twenty-five A. And last name, it starts with a C. Coop maybe? Is it? No.
Been a while. So I've been following this from afar, kind of concerned, I have no dog in this fight, but this is totally uncomfortable. You guys went down this path way back then, and we took it the refer and that's probably what's going to happen tonight, where you're going to go to Austin. So I don't know. And you're going to raise the rents, it's a game, I mean, not everybody, I mean, won't go all the way, I'm, I'm right there. You got people that in Fort Versace, then this, eleven, five hundred thousand or higher house. You got people in Fort Yuga or maybe in Vice, and maybe happy to have a house for three hundred bucks, yeah, they need a license, it's a rough one. You can look through LA, Denver, all these big cities, the people can't afford rent, where they live, they're living on their streets. They put a tent, rent their site out. I've been all over the place, I went through Jacksonville, they did freak me out, it's block after block after block of tents, people live there. That's where we're headed. This whole thing is crazy. You guys alter nothing. And if you can't pass this for five weeks and feel good about it, you need to either table it or get rid of it. My head's just crazy, man. I mean, you got to have a good feeling in your gut, this is right. If it ain't right anyway, you need to do the right thing, table it, push it off the side, sit down with the real people around the table and figure out the right way. And I agree, there's, there's probably needs, you see, better oversight here. Overregulation is the way to go. That's all I got. Thank you. Thank you.
That's all we have for this.
Well, my, uh, my name's Laura from Monroe.
Address.
Eight-five, no, six-five-eight-five, uh, care for you. Anyhow, I heard a, did I hear the number right that you believe you have sixty percent participation, about forty percent having problems getting them to participate? Was that correct, Laura, I heard you said there's something?
I'm not sure I'd say that again.
You said that you would have probably sixty percent of people or the landlords participating and may have problems, but it's much as forty percent of the landlords participate. Did I hear that correctly?
Did I hear that correctly?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry to hear you guys.
There was, uh, on the one was ten percent potential uncollected fees.
What's that?
Ten percent of potential uncollected fees.
Oh, ten percent uncollected fees. All right. Well, when I was looking at your numbers of, of how many people are, are, have violations and so on, ten, fifteen percent, or fifteen percent, give or take. So, if there's fifteen percent of these rentals out there that we are having problems with, that means, well, eighty-five percent, eighty, eighty-five percent, you're gonna be causing them a problem. Why don't you take eighty-five percent? Everybody knows who the landlords and what are rentals. If you don't, I'll tell you how you know. We have to register with, for taxes. That's where you guys get in your numbers, that's how you know who, who and what are the renters. Because I get my tax bills every year. That's how they, that's where they get their numbers. So we're already registered by law. We don't have to add numbers registration. All right? So, Mr. Graham's brought up, there's already a bill of rights for the renters. Explain if, another easy thing to do, why don't you just say, hey, with every need that you have to hand, you're a renter of bill of rights. So they jump out, you could go ahead and take the proper steps when you cannot. It's, it's fairly simple. There, I do not believe that there should be any inspection program, unless the renter calls up and says, I've got a broken pipe in my house, smells like sewage, we've got a problem here. All right? Now, last but not least, you have your numbers about, um, problem houses, open, well, again, I've talked to you about my house on Parker Avenue, not once since, since any of the action was open, has anybody come out and said, okay, this has been compliant, this has been compliant, this, we just need you to take care of this, and we would be very, very happy. That has never happened. I, I, in fact, somewhat the opposite is happening, where, well, I could come out and find ten more problems with your property. I said, I know you can find problems with my property, but let's clear the books before we go further. So, we've heard from everybody here, the programs are in place. This, this program, as First General said, uh, has, it's not quite fully baked. The, uh, in fact, you know, just going over the dates of the, uh, you know, of the April forum, we had one forum that any of the, uh, any of the landlords were invited to. And the forums that I wasn't, or the, uh, the committee meetings that I haven't been able to come to, I watched and I was like, I cannot believe that there's this much argument, argument, or just animosity between the two parties. So, I'd say table this, let's get some more forums, let's figure out how we can come with, with something that makes sense. I do not believe that the city is really coming at us to get more money. You know, sixty-five dollars is not a lot of money, but at the same time, it's a lot of money when you add it up collectively, and we don't have a program that is fully prepared to be enacted in the next, basically, four, four to six months. And I don't believe with only one, that April meeting, public comment, or the, um, where it was, yeah, April twenty-fourth meeting, was the only meeting that our committee decided to go and sit down with landlords, and I talked to another landlord because I, I was out of town. Anyhow, thank you. I'd say we table it, get some more meetings, get this, you guys really want to go through with it? Got about six months to a year before all the suggestions you can make.
Thank you.
Well, I wasn't here, I didn't know I had to sign up, so I wasn't here early to sign up.
Last one.
It'll take me two minutes.
Yes.
I don't live in Pickle, my name's Lisa Brown. I don't live in Pickle, I'm from Pickle. I have rental property in Pickle. Um, I'm currently updating multiple properties of mine, because I just, not because I have to, but because I want to, I want to give better properties to my tenants, and that's not just properties here in Pickle. I would live in any of my properties, whether it's in P State, Tiff City, or Pickle. That's why I update my properties, just I want my tenants to live in something that I would live in. Um, my philosophy, my, my husband and I's philosophy with our properties is, if our property looks nicer than the one they saw yesterday, and the price is slightly better than the one they saw yesterday, that doesn't look as nice, they're gonna take ours without even having to think about it. They're gonna tell, right now, let's sign the lease. I wanna live here. That's what we want, and that's what we have in our properties. Um, what was said earlier about people's, you know, if they have any problems with potential zoning issues, standing out on the street, that's a lot. They've gone up and taken pictures.
Through the windows.
I, I have opposed that, so that's not true either. Um, so what happens when a tenant lives in a property, tears it up, you guys come in and do an inspection, and it's, I mean, torn to shit? How long are you gonna give this stuff to? Whether, and, and this would be major things. And, and I've seen this firsthand, where people come in, have a big old party, tear the house up, walk away, be friends, family, you could own the house, you could rent it. They tear it up, they walk away. I, I know, there's somebody up here that knows about this firsthand, because it happened in my parents' house, about forty years ago, forty-five years ago. Ten thousand dollars worth of damage done to the house because of a party that was had, wasn't supposed to be happening. Did those people have to pay for it? No, my parents paid for it. My parents were the ones that had to take care of it. So, just because a property looks bad while a tenant's there, doesn't mean it's the landlord's problem. Doesn't mean that something we're doing or not doing is the issue. We're not living in Russia or North Korea yet, I don't think we should go down the path of Texas. I think we should keep this as a democracy, and listen to the people, not just who are telling you that we want to do this and let's go ahead. How often you can vote against them? Do you automatically just go anything they want? Or do you actually listen to the people that are protesting, saying, hey, that there's something wrong? Thanks.
Thank you.
I can go ahead, and I wanted to share, um, one of the emails that I received from, um, it's Spencer Felteer, who owns properties in Pickle. Uh, he said, I'm not able to attend the meeting, but as a landlord in this town, I support this program one hundred percent. I find it important to hold us landlords to a certain standard. It is important to work with our tenants on any serious issues that need to be addressed. That is a safety concern to the tenant. This program will also help with the beautification of our town, not to mention the positive impact it would have on property values. Thank you for all you do. This issue has my full support. Please pass this program. It was Spencer Felteer.
More people come in and talk about it, that's, hey, I need.
Did you sign the paper? Did you sign the paper?
I, I got one that, uh, an email that was sent to all the commissioners, um, by Greg Monte, he wanted it read into the record. He says, dear commissioners, I've read the proposed rental inspection program and support its approval. With materially significant portion of housing not owner occupied, it's important for the general well-being of the community to establish standards for rental properties, and I need to enforce established standards. I therefore support the proposed rental inspection program. Please read this into the record or record the statement into the meeting, record at the discretion of the commissioners. After review of the rental inspection program, I find the proposed, the proposal reasonable and important for the overall health and well-being of ci- city residents. Rental housing is a big part of the city, and the tenant should be assured of a safe and healthy home. As I look around the city, most of the rental properties meet this standard, but a significant number do not. We must have a means to ensure property owners take an interest in the city, especially non-residents and investors, and maintain their properties. This program seems to be a good, balanced approach. I will note it is critical that established standard be very clear, economically reasonable, and enforced in an unbiased manner by the city. Selective enforcement or targeting of people will undermine the value of the program. Clarity, transparency, and integrity are critical to any such program. I do recognize the program has potential unplanned expenses for investors. Prior to moving to Pickle, I ran a real estate company that managed approximately two thousand rental units. We worked hard to ensure all of the property owners maintained their homes, and worked hard to ensure tenants treated the property with respect. I found that the best approach to both goals was irregular inspection of properties by my maintenance department. Without such an inspection program, we had little chance of meeting our goal of providing safe, healthy, and affordable rental units. And while property owners are not always happy with the fee for inspections, they were always happy knowing that they were actively working to maintain the value of their investments. Inspection programs help property owners advantage with a balance between the need of the tenants and the need of the owner. It is based on my experience and my desire to see all the city residents living in safe and healthy homes, and for investors in our city to know standards exist that will help ensure the value of their investments, that I support this proposed rental inspection program. Respectfully, Greg Monte. Now, with that said, I had heard and not sent it in, because I wanted to listen. I wanted to hear the proposal from the city, I wanted to hear what people who came to the meeting said, and I wanted to read it. And people are taking blank stares, are blank stares, as that we don't care, or that we already made up our mind. No one's made up their mind at this point. Nobody has made up their mind. I'm allowed to assess the information given and respectfully listen to you guys, even though some of you out there were not respectful to people who were standing at the podium. I mean, a lot of good points we'll make here tonight, folks. A lot of good points, and I respect a lot of what you guys have said. And I believe that we need more dialogue from the, the rental people, or from the landlords, so that I want the best program possible. If we're gonna have a program, I don't want to just trip into it and say, oh yeah, this is it. So, I mean, I've heard a, a lot of good stuff from a lot of people out there, and the program has evolved. I mean, it started out, and we had landlords that came to that first meeting, when we met with them, there was just no way, there's just no, and they were right. They were right to stand up to this, and we made changes. We, we made them make changes, we made Chris make changes, because, you know, some of the stuff just wasn't, it, it wasn't gonna fly, and it shouldn't fly. So, I don't know. Chris, with that being said.
Yeah, I want to maybe comment myself too. Uh, since I came on the commission, and people made a lot of comments about us not listening, I will tell you that one of the most things that I have heard from people is that complaints about Pickle, that it's trashage, ran by slum lords, uh, that no one wants to live or invest in here, and that the city of Pickle needs to do something about it. I don't agree with that. I'm actually really proud to see so many people getting involved. They said the same things earlier, that we need to come together as a community and work to make it better. I agree. It can't just be the city that gets everything done, it takes place when it doesn't work either. Uh, so with that said, I also agree that, um, there needs to be accountability. We have those situations where people are living in unsafe conditions. I grew up that way. I lived in a single-family home, who, the landlord probably could have done better things. So I do see where there's a need for this. But I do also agree that, um, there needs to be collaboration, there needs to be more witnesses, since we do need to listen. For that, I, listening to what people are saying, I do think it needs to be tabled, and that's what I'm gonna propose.
Well, propose to table? I'm seconded.
I'll propose to table it.
Let's move, and I'm seconded. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner?
Commissioner Grissa?
Aye.
Commissioner Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Better?
Aye.
All right. With thi- that being said, I would like, is Chuck still here? Chuck is still here?
Yeah, he's here.
Can you get some people together so that we could meet? Just some of the landlords, some of the people that you think, so that you can meet with us and city staff, so that we could make this better? All right?
Great idea, great idea.
All right, so compromise, though, honestly, this is where I'm, compromise means one side gives, and another side gives, and actually both sides aren't happy. That, that's the art of compromise.
You're right.
All right?
There's a lot of good points on both sides.
I know, that's why.
Well, against anybody, or quarter against, you know, I think they have a lot to recommend, but I think the majority is seeing the problems we have here, that it's not completed yet. It's not really, you have to realize, we haven't seen a fine practice.
Right, and I think that is a huge concern too, because if you guys haven't seen it, you need to see it, so.
I respect your decisions here. We'll accuse you of not listening.
You did accuse us of that.
We're wrong, we're wrong. I apologize.
You accused us of not listening, and that we had already made our mind up. We hadn't made anything, no, we didn't.
Good. Well, here's the point. I can, I can, I got a lot of contacts on landlords, and investors, I'll get, I'll get an email, we'll send out something, and we'll send up a meeting.
Send up a meeting.
We'll go with these ideas, and we'll come up with a plan.
Yes.
Thank you.
As long as you know that, I don't know how long it will take, but it's compromise, it's the art of compromise.
Well, and the point is, just do it right.
Let's do it right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What do you need? Real quick, real quick, we got other business, we got to finish.
I want to thank you all, everybody who jumped to conclusions that you guys had made up your minds. I really, on behalf of everybody that I've worked with, want to thank you guys. I think this is probably the first trust set that you guys have made to work with the community, and I think it'll do us a long way.
Even we've listened to you the whole time, we've worked all of the fun.
Just wanted to check you to length.
We respect you, try and respect us.
We will move into new business, resolution number R dash ninety-five dash twenty-three.
A resolution for consent to accept the Ohio Department of Development for a hundred thousand dollars for Ridge Street water upgrades.
Well, Commissioner, um, some, some good news here, uh, one of the projects we got done about a few years ago, a water project on Ridge Street, uh, two years ago, we submitted that for funding through the CARES Act, um, coronavirus act money, and in the third round of projects, we were chosen, and we will receive one hundred thousand dollar grant for this project, uh, the estimated total cost of the project is around two hundred seventeen thousand dollars, so we'll get half of it paid for. So this is. So this is a resolution for us to, uh, to accept the grant.
Kevin, when would the project be initiated?
Uh, the project will go out for bid in hopefully the beginning of 2024, and then per the grant, that's completed by 12/31/24. So it should be a pretty quick turnaround. As I said, it's already designed. We're gonna get out the bid first of the year, hopefully get some good pricing.
Are there any questions or comments? Citizens, uh, Terry Little? I'm going to speak to this resolution. So if there are no questions or comments from our citizens, I would entertain a motion.
I'll leave it, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Should I recite it?
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carried. Resolution number R-96-23.
A resolution adopting sewer fund guidelines.
Yes, um, so all three of our water-related funds, sewer, water, and storm, these are the next three resolutions. So as we build in our balance cash reserves, and these go in the right direction in our funds, we decided that we needed to kind of determine what is a good balance always carry going forward. Uh, we, uh, we hired Sawville Associates. They did this for Power, um, for Power Group, uh, 10 years ago. And so we followed their model, and we have three separate guidelines, one for each one. This first one being the sewer. So it sets a guideline, uh, approximately $7 million. $7.5 million, that's your, that number that you should not go below. And that, that reason, the reason for that is you have a year of operating costs, a year of debt, two years' worth of capital expenditures, and then the awe crap emergency fund in case if you're large, something large, you have to be replaced very quickly out of immediate funds. Same methodology, G, was used for all three of us.
My understanding is that these guidelines are similar to the ones that the electric system has had in place for some time.
Yes, they are, they're very close. A little different, while we have more debt than power, that's why they're very similar, yes.
Are there questions or comments from the commission? We have Gary Conick.
Gary Conick, five, here at Good Place. Can you hear me?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Keep going.
The, uh, I don't know what precipitated this. On the 20 June commission meeting, there was discussion about balances. And the balances, uh, I mentioned, I thought some were excessive. So as a result of that, there was a, they were looking to, quite the, the discussion was, look to how the power, uh, people do it. And back at the electric system, on a $37 million program, they only had a balance of less, you know, a little over $1 million. So you're talking about 3% or 4%. So the, the idea here is just maybe they're excessive on these others when, you know, the, uh, the noise part sewer, the balance was, uh, you know, they could actually operate the sewer system for a couple of years without fucking any more money. So that was the, I, I thought that it was the gist of what was gonna happen was that the, uh, the utilities department was gonna contact the electric department, have a psych conversation, and, and go forward. Now, well, that's not what happened. What happened was they got, they hired a consultant, and the consultant came to, you know, consultants, I've been a consultant professionally. You know, if you go to the client, and the client says, "You need $1 million for a reserve," you say, "No, you know." You know, "How much do you need, how many do you need for operating? Do you need one year's work?"
One year?
You know, you don't argue with the client if you want to pay. So I would question some of these, you know, what you would call unbalanced guidelines. And because what, and also submit that they should be not to exceed guidelines, because if you actually are gonna go to these fund, uh, these guidelines, you may have to increase utility rates. They're already too high. And that was not the whole point of the 20 June commission meeting discussion.
I want to increase the utility rates.
That, okay.
And that discussion, that discussion pristine in that meeting.
Yep.
Okay. So, so, you know, I, so I'm thinking, in the last 20 years, how many years has the city not been paying at least 80% of their utility fees? For an entire year? I would say zero. Okay? So if, why do you need 12 months of operating expenses for all three of these utility areas? Six months may be reasonable, maybe. I think in the 1913 flood, they probably weren't collecting money. But since the 1913 flood, barring an invasion, I don't think you're gonna have, you, number one, if they don't pay, you kind of off anyway, but then a month...
Unless there's another pandemic, right?
Were they, did they stop paying? I paid all of my utility fees during the pandemic. I think everybody paid.
I don't think everybody paid.
Did at least 80% of them pay?
I don't know. I'll check.
Okay, well, that's the end, that's the question. What's the answer? Did people pay their bills during the pandemic? Did 80% of the people pay their utility bills?
Yes, at least 80% paid.
Then why do you need two, one entire year to cover your operating expenses? 80%, I would say, why not six months? I think, I think this is a very conservative approach to the balance, and maybe it could have a revisit. Two years of capital expenditures. The idea here of what I read in on capital expenditures is you're gonna fund them with current refunds. No, it doesn't. Capital expenditures go up and down, 10 million, 20 million, 30 million. There's no reason that citizens in 2023 should pay for a capital expenditure that's gonna provide value to citizens up to 2050. And that's the approach that the city is using. So two years of capital expenditures, there needs to be some balance in. One year of debt service, like I said, uh, you got a revolving fund, half a year at max. Emergency fund of $1 million. Why don't you look at maybe combining emergency funds? And have, you know, I mean, over the last five years, how much can you truly use per year emergency fund? $1 million a year? What's the answer?
We planned out a lot of our projects the last few years. We have not had to use an emergency fund. The definition of an emergency fund is to be there in case something does happen.
Yeah, emergency combined emergencies. You can combine emergency funds for enterprise fund.
We cannot, we cannot co-mingle these funds. Sewer stays a sewer, water's a water, storm stays a storm. We cannot share the same kinds of funds.
I dare say you may want to revisit that. But the, the true emergency fund utilization of the last 20 years, I mean, $1 million, uh, you have the ability to borrow money for true emergency that involves capital expenditure.
Very, very tight, so.
My tight, so, I would say...
That's a good point, but, all right, we do have the ability to do that.
The ability to borrow for, in a true emergency. So I would say not to exceed, so you don't raise, uh, citizens, uh, and the final thing I'd say is, even with this out, this very generous and conservative approach, you still are over in sewer, over $7 million, giving back to citizens. Thank you.
It's my understanding that it's, that is a guy who just never had gone in a certain place.
Yeah.
And we're just...
These are suggested guidelines.
Good, any commissions?
Uh, Tom Moore, 1803 Nagland Avenue, and also the chair of the Utility Board. Uh, Utility Board, we've met quite a few times with Kevin. Uh, we've reviewed his proposal here. Uh, we all find it, uh, very in good order. Um, we, in addition to this, just in general, we've, uh, looked at the budget, we've looked at the numbers. Kevin keeps really great numbers on all of the things under his purview. Um, we've gone through that. We've got a lot of smart people on this board. We've got two IT guys, we've got some business guys, a lot of people know numbers. Kevin knows his numbers too, and we've been able to verify that as the citizen oversight board on that. Um, that being said, these, these funds, I'll go through, I'll go through each one of them. But just in general, um, the idea that those funds are unneeded or not being thought through, um, that's, that's just not accurate. Um, I would encourage anybody who thinks that, uh, maybe these are not as well thought out as they should be, I would encourage you, come to the Utility Board meeting. You can find them on the calendar, they're open to the public. Uh, you can come hang out and see what we got for the numbers. Uh, but so far, everything's looked very, very good, very good, well above board. Uh, right now, we're on track. It, it seems like for the next couple of years here, we're gonna have relatively even rates. We have a much more modern, uh, utility system than, uh, somewhere surrounding neighboring cities here, uh, which does account a little bit for the, the increased prices. Some people seem to notice. Um, but let's, let's take a look through each one of these, uh, proposed savings, you know, buckets, basically. Uh, you've got the year of maintenance expenses. So, uh, as a statement, these are very conservative numbers. Well, you want to be broadly conservative with your utility bills. You don't want them to be subject to wild swings up and down as market conditions. Having a year of buffer will really help absorb those potential changes. Um, and as you mentioned, COVID, um, yeah, a lot of people did, did pay their bills. Uh, some people didn't, and there's, based off what happened with, uh, certain, um, abilities to, for real payment, um, during that time, I would hate to think that there was a worse payment and what may happen. Uh, let's see here, so debt service payments, uh, that's, that's pretty standard. I, I think we should have additional capacity there. Um, I don't think that we should use up the ability of, "Oh, let's just give back a bunch of money to citizens right now. Let's go for two or three years without any utility payments." I don't think we should use that up right now, really, really. I think we should save that, and God forbid we ever need it. It's there. Um, let's see here, so capital, uh, capital expenses. Um, you know, capital expenses go up and down, as was pointed out, absolutely. Why not have a two-year buffer in there? It's gonna get sucked up at some point. It's gonna be given back to it other times. And absolutely, the citizens of 2023 should pay for the good infrastructure of the citizens of 2053. Um, utilities are long-term expenditures. The city, I mean, I would imagine that you guys are hoping that Pickwa's still around in 2003. Uh, I think a lot of the people, um, that are around the city right now are probably hoping that it's here at that point. Maybe they've got kids, or you've got, uh, people who are starting families here would like to see it here in 2053. Absolutely. Um, the capital expenditures we're doing right now are gonna have an impact on, on 2053.
And that's, that's a good thing.
That is a good thing. Uh, let's see here, and then, uh, let's see here, so... We've got just kind of the general emergency fund. Uh, co-mingling emergency funds obviously doesn't make sense. If you're gonna have an emergency in one place, it's likely you're gonna have an emergency in another place. It's good to have those in separate buckets. Um, you know, it's, it's unlikely that we're gonna see some kind of broad emergency in just one area. That's not gonna affect another area. If you've got them co-mingled, then whoever, whoever gets to it first, well, then they've got all the money. Um, and then other departments and utilities don't get them. Um, just in general, um, we, again, the Utility Board met on this. We went through the numbers. They all make sense. Um, they all seem reasonable. Uh, the conservative, uh, kind of idea here of making sure we do have a big stash of emergency funds and funds for operating expenses, that's intentional to make sure that stuff stays stable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we leave, um, as the chairman of the Utility Board, did the Utility Board pass a resolution approving the study?
Uh, we, we did not. Uh, we did not end up with quorum in the requisite time, uh, all at once. Though we have, uh, a knowledge from everybody that this was well-proofed. Um, we would have liked to have a specific resolution, but we were not able to get that. Uh, we don't have any specific dissenters as part of Utility Board right now, though. And thanks, Kevin. Have a good day.
Thank you for volunteering to serve on one of our boards. If that's what it takes, is citizens getting involved.
Yeah. Thank you.
One other thing I'd like to add is, you know, sending these suggested guidelines, this could lead to lower rates in the future. If you're showing that you are over the guideline of what you deem that you will need, then you can bring it forth to the commission, potentially to lower rates or potentially some of the stuff. Other things maybe do is pay off debt early. You know, there are ways to, you know, help the long-term growth and funding of these funds, these water sewer and storm funds by paying off debt, having this emergency money, and then potentially lowering rates when you're in a position to do it.
I approve the approval of resolution number R-96-23.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carried. Resolution number R-97-23.
A resolution adopting storm water fund balance guidelines.
This one is for the water fund. Uh, water fund is slightly higher, about $8.5 million by the suggested guidelines.
Storm water.
Oh, we're on storm water, sorry.
Sorry.
Uh, storm water's slightly lower then. So storm water is a lower fund, is, um, about 1.50 of what we bring in from the other funds yearly in revenue. And so it's about $1.7 million right now as a suggested fund balance. But same calculation, storm water does have no debt right now, so it's a zero.
And for someone who wants to believe that we have the highest storm water rates in the area, we do not.
Storm water rates are complicated. Every city does it differently. Ours is $7 per 5,400 square feet. Other cities are $5, but then it's per 2,500 square feet. So when you...
Ours is set to go up, though, right?
Ours is set to go up 3% a year with inflation going forward, yes. Though they did not go up for six years, and then this year, the first year, they went up. They're scheduled to go up 3% next year, I think.
Any other comments, questions? Gary?
I've covered all three with my comments.
All three? No, appreciate you.
Appreciate your time.
No, appreciate you.
I'll make a motion if that resolution...
Hey, sir, come on.
Uh, just, just real quick, just to point out, the storm sewer, um, Kevin, you've talked to us about some of the work you guys have done on trying to do smoke testing and figuring out where the storm sewers are, the storm drains are overlapping sewer drains, and getting those resolved. Um, it sounds like you've had a lot of success so far, and then there's more success planned over the next year, year or so. Um, and what that's gonna end up doing is, uh, based on what we're hearing, is if it rains, the sewers go way up because the storm drains are leaking into them. It's all sudden your sewer's at full capacity just processing rainwater. Um, and some of the stuff that Kevin's keeping going through right now is trying to make sure those systems get, uh, isolated from each other so that when it rains, we don't have this overwhelming sewer, sewer bill. Um, so again, in, in addition to, uh, you know, having a good savings of money for, uh, needed emergencies and for plant expenses, uh, also, things are being done to make sure that the current operating expenses drop, um, as we, as we move forward and continue improving, um, and make sure the systems are, make sure the systems are working the way they're supposed to be working as optimally as possible.
Thank you. Is there any question?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is been carried. That is been carried. Resolution number R-98-23.
A resolution adopting water fund balance guidelines.
And lastly, the water fund balance, which I had projected about eight and a half million dollars, running the numbers a couple hours ago, so it's a little higher than the sewer fund, but we do have a lot more water infrastructure out in our distribution system, we have towers, pump stations, so a little of the stuff, some of the stuff you don't have on the sewer side, just more infrastructure to upkeep, and 24/7 operations at that facility at the water point, slightly higher.
Questions, comments? Gary, do you want to address this?
No, I covered it.
Okay.
All three, the guidelines are the same on all three.
Okay.
I think they're very conservative.
Thank you.
And if it resulted increases utility rates, I think it would be huge.
Oh, yes.
Is there a motion?
I approve the approval of resolution R-98-23.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Resolution number R-100-23.
Did you have a number 99?
Oh, sorry. Resolution number R-99-23.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into preliminary legislation with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Leaning Road resurfacing project.
Thank you, Commissioner, as you know, the Leaning Road corridor from County Road 25A to Ash Street is slated to be resurfaced in the near future. We have funding in place for the project, which consists of sources from the STP program, which is federal highway dollars, that's a $597,000 funding source. There's also $300,000 from the Ohio Public Works Commission Program. The remaining balance of the cost of the project would come from City of Miami County local funds. It's currently estimated to be about a one, slightly over a million dollar resurfacing project, and that would include milling off the existing asphalt and resurfacing the roadway corridor with a new riding course. The, as previously discussed, the asphalt or the pavement marking allowance would remain as is for the findings of the salt study, that all rain goes would not provide any real benefit in terms of the flow of traffic or something. So what I have before you this evening is an item that we're required to have commission authorize, which is the preliminary legislation, which essentially tells the ODAT that it's, you desire for them to proceed with the project, finalize the design, let it fit its, and go ahead with the construction.
Any other comments or questions? No motion. Roland, are they still here? Zorman? No. I would add that to you, no motion.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution number R-99-23.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carried. Resolution number R-100-23.
A resolution to adopt the name for the newly constructed pedestrian bridge currently referred to as the Great Miami River Trail Bridge.
Good evening, commissioners. I just wanted to stand up, so I'm like, we wouldn't fall asleep, but I appreciate you coming the long journey through this meeting, but also, this process with naming, it has been all thing in and of itself. We started basically with a proposal from the diversity committee to name the new pedestrian bridge. A proposal was made both by Mr. Barry Coney and by diversity committee for Atomic City, the Atomic City Bridge. Another proposal was given for Goodrich Giles and the Atomic City Bridge. So those are the two, we've had other proposals throughout the course of both processing this request and developing a good methodology for taking a request for name for facilities, which can be a very contentious issue with lots of ideas and lots of reasons behind, you know, people's want for a certain name at a particular place. Currently, the way this has panned out is we didn't have a really good policy in place at the very outset, we just had a main proposal, we developed one as we started learning what was going on. So we didn't at first have an application, we do now, it's in the package today, so you have both main proposals, the planning commission forward in both for your consideration. I tried to create an application that sort of standardized these requests so that whatever is being thrown your way has been given good consideration, and you are able to consider both at this time. I would say public comment has been mostly in favor of the Atomic City Bridge by my own personal side. I can step away for a minute.
I can tell you as a member of the diversity committee that Atomic City Bridge is a good suggestion and was favored. One suggestion made was the Atomic City Bridge at Goodrich Giles Park, that was stated, and I don't have a problem with that one either, but that's not on the, or up for debate, so just the two that I see. Do you want, as a member of the diversity committee, do you want to come up about this?
The bridge?
Yes, Atomic City Bridge. Or Atomic City Bridge?
I just walked back in.
Atomic City Bridge?
Um, Atomic City, Goodrich Giles, Atomic City Bridge.
Yeah, Goodrich Giles, and Atomic City, all right.
So just Atomic City or Goodrich Giles and Atomic City?
Yeah, those are the two suggestions. And I said, I said, we discussed it, diversity and Atomic City Bridge, but I did, I always, I did like, your suggestion was at Goodrich Giles, and I liked that one, I did like that.
So as a member of the diversity committee, so the two main ones that our committee discussed that we've all enjoyed was just calling the Atomic City Bridge, as well as doing the Atomic City Bridge at Goodrich Giles Park. A good kind of comparison would be at Disney World, you have Magic Kingdom, people refer to it as Magic, Magic Kingdom, people could refer to the bridge as the Atomic City Bridge, but you could also refer to it as Magic Kingdom at Disney World, and so that would be a similar idea, would it be, it would be the Atomic City Bridge at Goodrich Giles Park, which I think flows much better, especially if you do shorten it, if you do Goodrich Giles Park and Atomic City Bridge, or vice versa, that doesn't really flow well, you can't really shorten that because you're actually cutting off half of the official name, but I feel like one of those two options is much better, either just Atomic City Bridge or Atomic City Bridge at Goodrich Giles Park. Our committee, we did lean towards just Atomic City Bridge, but we are open to the second option as well.
Exactly, that's what I said, but then you came back. There you go.
Vice Mayor, Mayor person, can't we amend this if we decide to do this and accept what people have, that's what I've got. I like the fact that it's...
Kirsten, we can amend it, can we?
You can amend it, you can amend it whatever you like.
There you go.
There you go.
The resolution just says, it says, well, forward in both.
Yep. Okay. So this time, do you want to go ahead and amend?
Do you want to amend it?
Amend the name of the bridge.
Yeah, at Goodrich Giles, I like that.
I made the motion that we amend this to the Atomic City Bridge at Goodrich Giles Park.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So this is the amended, right?
Yes.
So then you have the amended.
May I have a motion now to accept?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, the amended one.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you for the painstaking process, and it was, because every month, I always looked at crisscross eyed, because I'm like, why isn't this getting done? Well, we had to come up with the process and I understood, so I appreciate it, I appreciate all your hard work, and thank you for being a great city planner, and good luck to you in the future.
We will move on to the public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to speak?
I didn't sign up.
She didn't, she said.
I did have to sign up for the comment. Oh, yeah, there wasn't, there wasn't.
There wasn't.
Yeah.
I don't think she signed it, no.
I didn't sign up.
You didn't sign up, sorry.
Okay.
My name is Melanie Walker, I live at 526 North Wayne, and I just wanted to thank y'all for, we had a tree that went down Saturday morning, and didn't hit the house, didn't hit any head going down, we had police officers on both sides of the tree, because I think it went down at 5:45, but I didn't know until 7:00, when I saw the light tap of the bedroom window. And they had called the city already and said, we've got a tree down, and it was a pretty substantial one, and they came out with a law, and I thought they were in a fault truck, but I didn't know that, so we didn't have one. And the guys were amazing, it was two guys, they were in and out in maybe 30 minutes and took care of it. And a year and a half before, the tree gone down across the street, and it was four or five trucks, six guys, and it took three or four hours. And I mean, it was a good sized branch that came off, and they did an amazing job, and I just wanted to thank y'all, tell you how great they were.
I thank the police as well for being out there, I guarantee you one of those two dudes in the back, because he said Saturday morning, I know they're not wearing a Saturday morning.
But it was just, you know, I think it's important, especially tonight after it's been pretty corrupt, that y'all here, that the city does an amazing job.
They do, they do a good job, we've got great city workers.
And anywhere else, they swept the sidewalk, or the street, everything, they did it perfect.
She is responsible too.
Chuck Starett, Laton, Joe Wilson, Carl Moyers, Kathleen Keller, Eva Silvers, Roland, Tyler Fonzie, Gary Kenick, and Tom.
I asked you, who are you?
Public comment.
Tom.
Geez, so nice, I want to thank you guys for cleaning up a tree on the bike trail to Europe.
Yeah, I think it was like two, three days ago, there wasn't one before, and then there was one, and then it was gone the next day. You guys are really good with the bike truck that get cleaned up. Open everything else with the lock line, the new bridge is still on track, I'll be able to cover that in your report. You know, people talk about how we don't have a pool and all that sort of stuff, and yeah, we have a pool. But I think if the bike trail gets undersold, and how good of a job it's taken care of, and how quickly issues on it are resolved, I'm excited to have it be more finished next year, I mean, I came back from Detroit, but as of right now, the part that is done, you guys do next is now of keeping it clean and making sure any issues like trees falling down on it are taken care of very early, probably, so thank you for that.
We'll move to city managers.
I'm so sorry, I just, I stayed for the end because I wanted to say thank you. Since the moment I saw Pickle on Google Maps from my seat in Florida, I really have been in love with this city. I can't explain it, it's chemical, I really feel affinity to this place, and more than that, I have to thank you because the city of Pickle has really benefited me as a young professional. I've gotten to go from, you know, grunt work to leadership in a very short period of time, and I so appreciate that.
Sure.
And I will be involved in the community and do living here as I move to the city of Dayton, so I just really appreciate everything you guys have done, appreciate my boss, Chris, Paul, and everybody else who's been my coworker, and thank you very much.
And any diversity members.
Look at our hearts.
Kirsten, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You're going to bring us much more, you really have, and you came from a road state coming here, so.
Ah, that's available, wow. But I'm glad to hear, thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten. City managers.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners, I have one item, it's been a long night.
Yeah.
First, I'd like to thank the mayor for moving the meeting to this evening and address the fact that for the last three Augusts, I haven't been able to participate in National Night Out, nor has the commission, because we've been in commission meetings, so moving the meeting and allowing us to participate in that last night was very beneficial to be engaged with the community, so thank you. We had a really good showing from our public safety forces, we had public works had vehicles, equipment out at Indian Bridge, as well as power, our power department, and then Care Flight landed, which was a really amazing thing for these young kids, because I remember being a young child, and you know, when it was something, a fire truck, or a train, or you know, a helicopter came back to that, being a young child, having a helicopter land in your, basically in your neighborhood. So it really is a wonderful event, and I want to give props to the Alexanders, because they do a lot of work to make that happen out at Indian Bridge, as well as the other locations across town. But in particular, they had over 24 pieces of equipment in car show, and it's been growing here over the years, so you know, it's, it'd be fun next year if we can all get in at the MRAP, the utility vehicle, the police have, and ride from site to site, and went up there, but thank you again, it was successful.
Nothing like negotiating out of the MRAP, I had to do that once, it was quite interesting.
Vice Mayor, do you have anything to comment?
Hey, first of all, I'd like to thank all the citizens who all met, and I want our city manager and Chris not to put your head down or think that you did anything wrong, because that program is needed here, we just need to find two. And I know it's going to take a little more time, but if we don't, if we aren't responsive to what our citizens are saying, then we're not giving them the due diligence of our office, and we've got to do that. But let's work with them. One of the things that somebody said, and it was about the damage done to properties in association with that program, there's already a system in place, and it's called criminal charge, meaning that if you rent out a property, and the very first day that you go in, took, you take pictures, and you can, you can say, hey, this is what the property looked like, and then you rent it out, and the tent is thieves, and there's holes in the walls, and a porch torn up and whatnot, you can go to the police and take pictures of the current damage, compare it to the former damage, or the no damage, and say, hey, look, I want charges on that person, and you take it to court. And landlords do this every time, I know it's tedious, I know it's time consuming, but if they do it, it'll send a message to the tenants, all right? Because it's not the landlord's fault that the property got tore up, it's all the tenant, and we got to be responsible, and the person that can hold it responsible is the person that owns the property, all right? That system is in place. Could that be incorporated into the program we come up with? That's something we can talk about, that is something we can talk about. But we need to talk, and that's, that's where I'm getting at. The people that came tonight, some were indignant, some were yelling from the, from the back, that kind of stuff isn't helpful, but it is mindful to me in this position, how serious people were about this, and how involved, or how important it was to them. So I want to hear what they have to say, and this program from its inception has compromised, and we need to work, both sides need to compromise. So let's hear what some of the proposals the citizens have, get together, I'll get Chuck in his representative group, hopefully it's like four or five, and hopefully a couple commissioners can get on this, I would like to be a part of it, and Chris is the city manager, and let's have a couple meetings, and, because I don't want to delay this forever, but I want it to evolve and to be open, like Paul up there, he was saying, the revisions that we made to the, to the program, was it noted in there? Could we see the revisions?
We can produce every one of the documents.
That's what I'm saying, but if we highlight, and Paul does a good job with this when he sends out documents, if something's changed, or something is added or is questioned, he highlights it in red or blue or whatever, so people can see that, yeah, this has been changed, this has been updated. Some of their, some of the complaints I understood were nitpicking, and some were valid, so let's work with everybody. Everybody needed to have their say, they had their say tonight, but let's get down to the nitty gritty and work on this, because this is a needed program, and honestly, it is, and it is for safety. Greg Monty said it best, I loved what he had to say, and he didn't parse words, he said, you know, I mean, it's something for everybody, it's the safety for the city and the cities of all, so. And that's all I really have to say, I'm glad everybody participated in the National Night Out if they had a chance. I have a football I had to go to for my son, he got hurt, so in practice, just as well, but I might have a good time in National Night Out, that's all I've got.
Congratulations to St. James Church on the celebration for their 200th anniversary celebration on Sunday, it was a lot of fun, and hopefully they will be able to continue and to provide worship opportunities in that, in that place.
It was fun, I think, it's great.
Just the fact we're meeting at the near end of summer, and I know there's, every week I get an email from Florida about the amazing vegetables and things that are available at our farmer's market on Thursday, so just to remind our people that we have so many So just a reminder to people that we have so many wonderful things to take, uh, heart in, and, um, there's a lot going on in the community, and if you want fresh vegetables, be, be down here on Thursday. So that's all I have, thank you.
I wasn't able to make the National Night Out. We have a family, I probably go along, but, um, I hope everybody enjoyed it. It's always a great event, and it was nice to see that, you know, we didn't have a commission meeting coincide with it. Uh, I will say for tonight, I do appreciate everybody that's came out. Um, I really do think it's one of those things that I, when I talk to a lot of landlords, I know personally that do very well by their tenants. Uh, they're open to the program and just aren't, weren't sure on how it's gonna be implemented in that regard. And I heard that a lot tonight. Heard a lot of people say that they're very open to it. They understand the need for it. I do think it is needed, and I think there's that collaboration aspect. So what I really hope is that people, uh, aren't just gonna, um, talk the good game, but they really will get involved with it. Now, no matter what, you're not gonna make everybody happy, you completely understand that. Uh, but there is gonna be, um, work and collaboration there. Um, I do want to turn, uh, uh, I do want to thank Paul and Chris and the whole team for the work in that. I know I can feel defeated after all the work they've put into it, um, but it's not over, and so I do think that, um, this is the right move to move forward. Again, I do think that there needs to be accountability on a certain level in how we implement that, so it'll be turned, to be determined.
Thank you. Hi, I too want to thank you for all your due diligence and keeping us on board with all the changes. I think that I'm all for it. I think this is gonna be a great program once we get there. I think that just we need one more chance at getting other, those folks on board. Um, I would like to see this ordinance at our next meeting, which will be the 15th. And we'll be voting for it then. If you think you can get everybody together.
The 15th, the 15th.
More than one, uh, it gives us some time, we need a couple times.
Wow, I, this is important, it's in everybody's minds right now, and I think we need to move forward. So, um, I think I'm sure it's time we can get some folks together.
Quite honestly, I leave on the 4th, and I don't get back till the 21st. Quite honestly, I would love to be involved with this. My job, I depart on the 4th, and I don't arrive back in Pickwood till the 21st. Trying to get this accomplished in two weeks. This has been worked on since roughly the first of the year. There's only been one real collaborative meeting between landlords and the city. I believe there needs to be a little bit more, but to get it accomplished in two weeks and get people put an agenda, what are we gonna discuss or any sort of focus on what's gonna happen at a meeting? And saying that we'll get it done in two weeks, uh, I would say we'd be lucky to get that done in a month. And it might take two meetings, because this is gonna be the first real meeting, and I think it's not gonna be too much grit that, or the grit that's gonna be there is gonna be, like you say, you want collaboration. Yeah, well, collaboration's not gonna happen in two weeks. So I agree with you. The need to keep on, no problem in a quarter, but let's not. Again, we want a good, a good product, not a rushing product. Two weeks would be.
I would say at least that meeting sits on the agenda then, in the sense of with updates, so that people are aware, they know where to look for, um, what conversations have been had at what time especially, and we can keep that as a part of the, of the, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?